Welcome to the City Council of Newburyport Meeting of August 4th, 2025. Before we begin, I just want to remember a couple of folks that were near and dear to our community or ourselves. First of all, Linda Saunders-Colterjohn recently passed away. I know many of you know her and her sidekick, husband Tom. Linda passed away recently, had been in town for quite some time, married to Tom for 42 years. And their obituary, her obituary, just talks about their very fulfilling life together in Newburyport. She had many passions, tending to her garden, being a source of nurturing to all those that were around her, had a Yankee sensibility, avid home chef, loved sailing. She was known politically to many of us as an active supporter of the Newburyport Preservation Trust, could be seen at Newburyport's Restored Powderhouse. And for those who remember that long fight that several community members, including Tom, did to keep that intact, where Linda would greet people enthusiastically in period dress. So she passed away recently, and I'd like all of us to remember her. And lastly, on a personal note for me, and I'm not going to say too much because I will get very verklempt, my middle sister recently passed away, and it's hard to think about that, it's really hard to say that. But I appreciate the many condolences that my colleagues gave me. She passed away unexpectedly recently. So let's keep those folks in our thoughts for a few minutes. Thank you. And now if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll for the meeting for August 4th, Counselor Zede.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Counselor Darnis.
Here.
Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
As to late file items.
There's one tonight, it's Communication 660, an email from Jean Carter regarding a utility pole on State Street. It looks like it's to go to Public Works and Safety.
What would be the will of the council on the late files, their motion?
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file.
Second. Been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
One no.
One no, okay. That would lead us to public comment. We'll also take online comment if a hand is raised.
Board is empty.
Begin in-person comment, and I do see two hands. So we'll see what we have for... Shockingly, there's no public-public comment. So we will turn to online, and Owen Smith, if you could state your name, Owen, address, and up to two minutes on a topic on our agenda, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, that was inadvertent. I can't make any judgments.
Okay. Well, thank you for your true confession. Remove your permission to talk. Beth Chalk, name, address, up to two minutes on a topic on the agenda.
Hi, Beth Chalk, 144 Low Street. I was calling to just briefly express my support of the rezoning of those parcels in both sections of Low Street that you're discussing tonight. It really makes sense to bring low street corridors in line with each other and to give residents a little more flexibility and maybe get us a little more housing without, you know, burdening anybody by having too much in one spot. So I encourage you to approve that tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to remove your permission to talk, and your hand has been lowered. All right, so that would be it for public comment. That will lead us presumably to the mayor's comment. That would be Chief of Staff Seer.
Thank you, Council President. The mayors are able to attend today, they are having the school committee retreat from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock today. They will be leading a discussion on the superintendent's evaluation process, which they do every two years. They also will be looking at the scope of work, which was previously approved by the council, for the efficiencies between the city departments and school departments, hoping for a letter of support from the superintendent, so that way we can get going with that contract later this month. Also, just wanted to thank the city and counselors for all their work with Yankee Homecoming. I think it was a great week. Unfortunately, Thursday was rained out with Beetlejuice and the bed race being canceled. But a special thank to all departments, especially DPS, Health, the Library, RYS, Council on Aging, Sustainability, Veteran Services, and then also to the counselors who participated in the events this week. I also just wanted to flag for your attention, and the packet is the reappointment of our Human Resources Director. Look forward to discussion and committee for Donna's reappointment. We also have two reappointments for the Water and Sewer Commission tonight. One is the reappointment of Roger Jones and Paul Suso to the Water and Sewer Commission. They have been exceptional on the board, and I'm grateful for them for donating their time to our city. There's a lot going on at the city, sorry, at the Water and Sewer. We have a lot of capital projects, a lot of discussion on the rates, and I look forward to working with them in the future. I know there's been some conversation about the Port Plaza 40B project during their hearings this past few weeks, and they followed legal advice and asked a lot of good questions. So again, we look forward to their continued service on the Water and Sewer Commission. Just a few project updates. 59 Low Street is well underway. There will be a kickoff event in September. You'll see across the street at the Knox Middle School, the aging basketball hoops were removed and the pavement was replaced. And then at Atwood Park, the basketball half-court is also receiving a facelift in the next few weeks. Tonight, there will also be a discussion on the Brown School demolition. The Affordable Housing Trust has, sorry, Brown School gym demolition. The Affordable Housing Trust has approved additional funding to serve as a contingency for the demolition project. We look forward to moving forward, sorry, we look forward to the next steps in this phase, and we will keep residents updated throughout the process. We already had one community meeting, I believe, last month with great turnout, and we hope to continue to engage the neighborhood throughout the process. I also, it's in the packet, but there's just some updates on DPS's street work across the city. I'm not going to go street by street at the moment, but I just, again, huge shout-out to the DPS team for their work across the city. And that is all I have for the moment.
Questions for the Chief of Staff, Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Do I need to stand?
No, I think it's fine, people usually sit this far.
I wasn't sure I could ever ask. Yeah, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. So on the, on the, of course, I just forgot them both because I asked a stupid question. Okay, sorry. So the Brown School demolition, gym demolition, sorry, same mistake with gym. The funds were originally from the, actually, never mind, that was not the question I meant to ask. You know what? If anyone else does have questions, go ahead, because I've completely lost my train of thought.
Anyone else?
Sorry.
Counselor Lane?
I'll just leave them there.
I think it's great that all the basketball courts are being redone in town. One ask would be the parks, like Cashman Park, some of the fields in town really could use some work, like the Pioneer League fields, and we get good money from the Pioneer League every year, and I know we do a lot down there, but the fields themselves really need some attention, that's from what I hear.
Thank you. I can talk to our parks tomorrow.
I don't know what it was, I'm sorry.
All right, we're going to go to Counselor Zede first now. We're going to go to Counselor Donahue, okay. Counselor Donahue?
Okay. The appointments to the Water and Sewer Board, this is what it was. There was a mention in the actual update that he emailed us, I'm not sure if, it wasn't mentioned in what you recapped, but it was mentioned in his update that, as it turned out, there was an actual maximum amount that the commission was allowed to, you know, provide relief for, for the Kmart project. So I guess my question is, that seems like a very quick sentence that is a bit of a revelation, that was not presented to us previously, is, you know, what that cap was and how that even was learned about? So just, do you have any information about that, that bit of information?
Yeah.
And what that mass, you know, what?
It's a, it's a...
When we learn that?
I tried to simplify, but it is more detailed, and I give credit to the commissioners and our legal team for helping. My understanding from reading everything is, they asked the developer to pay what was left on the bond for that, and that's the maximum allowed that they were assessed, so that's what they were able to pay. So that was kind of the way they, like, that's what the board decided to do, sorry, the commission decided to do regarding the fee. So it was based on the assessed amount that was owed on the bond.
Assessed amount owed on the bond of the project?
For that property, yeah.
For the property?
Yeah.
Okay. So is that typically what they do to assess for every property they do?
I would want to check with the assessors, and I would defer to the water, to DPS Water and Sewer Team, but that's my understanding, yes, is they would do an assessment whenever there's a better project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I just want to rise in that, I think the information is a little crossed here regarding the, the privilege fee and how it was assessed. The legal opinion that was used was, at the time, was withdrawn, and then was reissued and then withdrawn again, and then reissued yet again. And so we've been waiting since December for an answer back to the council about the status of the privilege fee going forward. And as it turns out that the information provided regarding the bond and how much was left was actually on a general bond, not a sewer-specific bond. So we actually are starting to cross the streams here. So we've gotten advice that says a volunteer board who can't set their own rates, who can't transfer monies from retained earnings into operations, who can't issue bonds, can somehow overrule an order from the city council signed by the mayor that was defended by two other legal opinions from our previous attorney going forward. So I'm not sure that it's legally resolved yet, and we're still awaiting answers back from the commission in general and from our legal team in specifically going forward. So I'm sorry if this creates a little kink in the armor here, but that's just where we are in status, where we are right now. Thank you.
We'll be discussing those appointments, and I think that's all relevant to that. Any other comments or questions for the Chief of Staff? Okay.
Thank you all.
And now I think we're going to entertain a motion for a little change in the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules, insert an emergency preamble, and ask for us to approve Order 745.
Second.
Second.
It had been seconded.
This is a resolution commending Dr. Robin Blair for his service to the city. I'll ask Dr. Blair to come up. And you guys, if you want to, aside, come on up here, and we'll read this, we'll read this to you. A resolution commending Dr. Robin S. Blair for his service to the city. Whereas Dr. Robin Blair has been serving the Newburyport community for well over 50 years, first as a doctor of optometry for 50 years, and then as a volunteer member for over 30 years combined on both the Conservation Commission and then the Board of Health, as well as a stint as Yankee Homecoming Chair. And whereas Dr. Robin S. Blair, as a member of the Conservation Commission, helped protect the health of our community by working to close the Crowland landfill, and then bring the landfill under compliance with state health codes, reducing odor and runoff. And whereas Dr. Robin Blair, as Chair of the Board of Health, led the city's response to the COVID pandemic, ensuring the community implemented the appropriate safety measures, thereby minimizing the impact of the virus in our community. And whereas Dr. Robin S. Blair, as Chair of the Board of Health, helped navigate the city through such controversial items as combined sewer overflows and the implementation of alert system, and most recently in the public debate of fluoride additives. And whereas Dr. Robin S. Blair's willingness to give countless hours spent in the service of his community, in addition to his professional demeanor and passion for tireless efforts, have won the respect and admiration of colleagues, elected officials, and residents alike. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Newburyport that we express our heartfelt gratitude and sincere appreciation to Dr. Robin S. Blair for his years of dedicated service to the city of Newburyport. Two, we recommend Dr. Blair for his exemplary service, dedication, and for setting a high standard of public service for all to follow. This resolution shall be spread upon the official minutes of the city council, and a copy be presented to Robin Blair as a token of our esteem and gratitude, that we wish Dr. Robin S. Blair all the best in retirement and enjoying his family, especially his grandchildren, as well as his many friends within the community. We have further resolved that this resolution be effective immediately upon its adoption, incorporating, and emergency preamble.
Dr. Blair, don't sit down. I think we could call those in favor first. Say aye.
Aye.
Should do a roll call because it's emergency preamble, but I think it'll fly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye, Kenzie.
Thank you.
See you later.
All right, that would lead us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of amendments for the June 18th meeting and the July 14th meeting. Two communications, application 275, a new block party at Olive Street between Russia and Merrimack from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 6th, to go to license and permits. And application 276, a recurring block party on Hancock Street between Bonfield Street and Lunt Street at 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 20th, to be received and filed as it was already reviewed at the clerk's office for approval. Transfer, one transfer this evening, it's transfer 243, it's DPS stabilization fund, $51,880 to a new Ford Explorer, same amount, to go to budget and finance. Four new appointments, appointment 584, Charles Roderas, Special Police Officer for the Newburyport Police Department, to go to Public Works and Safety. Appointment 585, Deborah Lukens, 225 Merrimack Street, to the Commission on Disabilities until 9:15, 2028, to go to Community Services. Appointment 586, Jennifer Pills, 15 Eagle Street, to the Commission on Disabilities, to 9:15, 2028, to Community Services. Appointment 588, Paul Gallagher, 6 Garrison Road, to the Waterfront Trust, till 9:1, 2030, to Community Services. One reappointment, appointment 587, Donald Drailick, 8 Chadwick Street, Methuen, as HR Director, until 9:15, 2028, to go to General Government and Committee of the Whole. One order to be continued to a date certain, August 25th. Order 741, the gift acceptance for Lofton Memorial Bench for $5,000. The following items are removed from the respective committees. Budget and Finance, Order 736, the following transfers, 215, 238, 239, 241, and 242. From General Government, Ordinance 190, and Communications, 649 and 652. From License and Permits, Applications, 272, 273, 274, and Appointment 582. From Planning and Development, Appointment 580, and Ordinances 198, 204, and 205. From Public Works and Safety, Communications, 654 and 544, and the following appointments, 851, no, I'm sorry, 581, 577, 571, 573, 574, 575, and 576, and Orders 738 and 739. And that is the consent agenda.
Just the wish of the council, any changes?
A motion to approve.
Oh.
I'd like to remove, I'd like to remove Appointment 587.
Second. You want to change it?
I was going to take out 584.
Appointment 584.
584.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With those changes. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Harmon refused. Come back in. Okay, that would lead us to the regular agenda.
That brings you to appointments, 584.
Mm-hmm. This, I believe, is a reappointment, and Officer Roderas is, he's been a police officer in town for, I don't even know how many years, he retired now, he's a special police officer. I'm just wondering if there's any appetite here just to prove this on first reading with an exception to the rules.
I would second that.
That's a motion.
Motion to...
Motion to approve.
Waive the rules.
Approve on first.
Sorry?
I don't think so.
He's still going to need, he's still going to need a second reading, but we could just...
We'll take care of the first reading, won't go to committee.
Because it's a reappointment, is that, that's correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so first reading, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so it won't go to committee, it'll come back to the next meeting, and it will be a roll call at that point.
That brings you to Appointment 587.
Motion to send to General Government Committee of the Whole.
Second.
So the reason I asked to pull this out is, I have a question really for my colleagues as much as anything else. So I'm not disputing the mayor's right to appoint anyone they want, we'll give them due diligence, but in this particular case, for this particular individual, their appointment and their contract have expired as of June 30th and July 1st. And specifically in their contract, it says that they would have 90 days in advance writing for reappointment, and if they did not get it, they were owed one month severance on the day that everything expired. And here we are, 34, 35 days after the appointment, and I'm just not sure if she's actually an employee right now. So this isn't a technicality, this isn't, there is no, in her contract, there's nothing about holdover, carryover, or anything like that. Human Resources law is pretty black and white, as we remind ourselves that we're paying for two fire chiefs under the same type of situation that went on here. So I'm just, while we debate this, I think the question for all of us is, do we allow the employee in the building, and do we ask that her email and things be suspended while we go through this motion? That's simply my question.
A motion is made to refer to General Government Committee of the Whole, further discussion, Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo those comments and also just point out the fact that we were not, a contract was not attached to this reappointment. And, I mean, I for one have raised concerns about the reappointment long before the reappointment was up with, with administration, and it's, you know, it's so late in the game for there to not even be a contract included, and there's no conversation about how we're supposed to really proceed with this. So I'm a little curious myself what, you know, the law really would dictate here, so...
Counselor Khan, Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. And it's a fair question. I think, I mean, I'm in favor of sending this to committee. We have a really vital role that the HR Director plays. I do think that there are some questions that we need to be having answered, and I did pose the question to the administration recently, you know, why was it not brought sooner? And as we've seen, there's a couple of things that we've been missing the mark on. The attorney also, Appointment 2, was kind of expired. In this case, we have a contract that, that had expired as brought up by the Ward 5 Counselor. It's all very fair. I have no answers, but I do know how vital this role is, and I don't feel comfortable just saying that, leaving it unfilled. But I do think in General Government, there's a lot of questions to be working on, but I do want to provide, if the Chief of Staff wants to come up here and comment, I would invite you, this is a good opportunity, because clearly we as counselors are not in the role you are, to kind of maybe say, what was the thinking behind here? Because I think this is the opportunity for the public to hear it as well. I offer that, if you'd like to.
Staff, want to respond to any of this?
Thank you, counselors. I agree with the motion of letting it go to General Government for further discussion and deliberation. Just on some of the points the Ward 5 Counselor mentioned, we understand that there is potentially some miscommunication on when this appointment was, but this has been, you know, unfortunately a practice, not just in this administration, in other administrations, where there has been some lag time in appointments. We have talked to the city solicitor. The city solicitor has said that it's normal case law of when a contract expires while they're going through appointment process, that they stay as an employee. That has happened recently with other directors in other positions. I think we should talk more about that in the committee. So I just, as far as the legal questions, we have asked our city solicitor about that, and we are confident, and we also are so confident in the HR Director's ability to do her duties. We sent in a letter of support, so appreciate, you know, that there's some confusion, but we are in compliance with the law, and we hope to move forward with this appointment through General Government and then through this first and second reading. Thank you.
Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate my fellow at-large counselor, because I was also going to basically ask the same question of the Chief of Staff. You know, while I certainly want this appointment to have deliberation, I do think the points are very fair. I'm glad to hear that there has been information from the city solicitor, but I would very much like to see that information, because it does, it seems to me very clear that at the very least, they are owed compensation for the fact that their contract was allowed to expire, and it's very clear in the contract that if the, there is not a reappointment made within the contract time, that they are entitled to a severance. And, but at the same token, that severance would suggest that they are no longer an employee, so that is, that leaves a lot of legal limbo to me, which perhaps, I honestly don't know where to go here, but perhaps the best course of action is to not bring the appointment in tonight, get the legal information from the city solicitor, so that we can have a better understanding as we do bring it into committee and have deliberation around the appointment, we really understand sort of what the legal standing is of whether or not we're reappointing an existing employee, or we are hiring a new employee that has been severed. So I guess the question at the end of the day I'm asking is, could this, the Chief of Staff share with us the information that's come from the city solicitor?
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so I just, I just want to be clear on this. I don't, I don't doubt that the person can do their job, I don't doubt that this is a vital role. I, I have, I, like everyone, have not seen any legal document that says there's a carryover, the contract says there's not, precedent or not. This is a new world. As a matter of fact, we still don't know if we have an interim DPS Director, because they haven't been appointed yet. It's just been named in kind of sort of an email and conversations, but there's a process that needs to go through, and we're not even doing that. Here's my concern. My concern as a fiduciary is, if God forbid, something happens, and let's say the employee falls down the stairs, the city's on the hook. The insurance can say they're technically not an employee. We have the same repercussions that we've had previously going forward, all because we wanted to try to be soft and gentle in terms of how we're dealing...
all because we wanted to try to be soft and gentle in terms of how we're dealing with this situation. It's awkward, we didn't create it, but it is awkward, and so, what, how do we protect the city? How do we protect liability? If we're getting legal advice that's not looking out for the long-term fiscal responsibility of the city, then I'm not sure we're getting appropriate level of legal advice. And that's really where I'm coming from. Nothing to do with the individual, nothing to do with the appointment, nothing to do with the role, et cetera, along the way. It's just, there's an, there's an, there's an appointment here that expired, and somebody's walking the hallways that has a potential liability for the city, and we should either acknowledge that, or we're going to all suffer the repercussions if something happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Preston?
Excuse me. Yeah, I, I stand convinced, because I think the counselor from Ward five makes a really good argument that should something happen while we're in a legal limbo, we are potentially leaving the city a bit at risk. So, I'm going to suggest maybe the best thing to do would be to table the appointment, reappointment, and, whether it's an appointment or a reappointment, to a date certain of August twenty-fifth, which would be our next committee meeting, if the original motion would be amended.
Counselor Harmon?
Let's see if there's a second interim.
I don't know, oh yeah, do I have a second on that?
So, I have not accepted the motion to table yet, because the employee still exists, right? And so, that doesn't solve the issue. So, listen, if we're okay, if we're collectively okay with sending this to General Government, we make it a priority, and we resolve this issue by the twenty-fifth, then we need to understand that. But every day that that employee is in the building for one reason or another is a potential liability for us going forward. And I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, our legal advice is, I don't worry about it, right? Because I am worried about it. So, but, you know, the will of the council is what I'll go by.
Motion's still on the floor to General Government Committee of the whole. Counselor Harmon, Counselor Khan?
Thank you. Appreciate very valid concerns being raised by my colleagues. I think, you know, I, I am in the camp of supporting moving this to committee, because as a body, we don't have the ability to remove an employee from the hallways, whether we believe they're here legally or not. And so, all that we're doing by extending this is creating a longer window during which we have that ambiguity hanging over us. So, we would still have an opportunity to engage with the administration on any legal documents, legal opinions that have been provided during that committee process, which would be committee of the whole. We would still have the opportunity to vote that down, either as members of that committee, or once it came back for the council, if we find new information that, that causes us not to support that. But I, I don't see how tabling this, or, or, I don't know, voting against it, you know, solves the problem that's been raised. I think we need more information, and I think we can, we can get that during our normal process. The options available to us are unfortunately limited in terms of what we can do tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Counselor President. One last point, and maybe I just don't remember. Is the contract, a new contract signed yet? Does anyone know? So it has not been?
No, I hope not. Just as a point of information, I asked that very question recently, and I was told they would, a contract wouldn't be signed until the reappointment.
Okay.
If the reappointment happens. Counselor Lane?
I tend to agree with Counselor Harmon in this, and I think tabling it just kind of prolongs it and puts us a little bit more, more liability there. I'd wanna just expedite this. This seems to me like an administration problem, less a council problem. I do appreciate that you brought up, you know, pointing out that the city is under some serious liability problems here with that. So, that being said, I would just say we move this to committee, just move it along, and they need to deal with it.
Further discussion, Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. Yeah, I just wanna point out a little bit to that, you know, after listening to everyone's comments, I think it does make sense to not draw out the liability length of time, because I do think that's serious and more thought upon it, and this particular role. This is not a, you know, typical role employee that, you know, is just in the building. This is someone that could actually be targeted in their, in their position of a job as HR director. That is probably one of the, one of the only roles in the city hall that gets targeted perhaps by a disgruntled person. So, to that end, I would see a liability more serious than just having a, you know, personal accident in the building, but rather being, you know, just in that position of HR. I mean, you're, you're, you kind of face all manner of things, right? So, that, to me, that, that kind of speaks a little more that we should be steadfast on this. Secondly, I just wanna say, you know, I mean, I hope, and truly I hope, that administration is paying close attention, the mayor included, even though he's not here, I hope he does pay attention if he watches the video after the fact. We can't keep having these hiccups of these, these processes not being followed. Like I said, I mean, this appointment has been discussed, reappointment has been discussed previously quite a bit to administration, and I don't know how it fell through the cracks. Like, I don't find this is just what happens sometimes is a good excuse. This can't keep happening, right? So, you know, especially to this point where this, this, there's, we don't know what the contract looks like. I mean, I just, this is, we're in a bad position, and as, as the Ward six counselor pointed out, definitely an administration problem, not a council problem. We, we didn't fail at this. This is, this is a process gone wrong. So please, I hope this does not continue to happen. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion on the floors, refer to General Government Committee of the whole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That will definitely happen at the next meeting. That would bring us to.
Communications, you have three. Communication six fifty-seven is a planning board report on Low Street and Hale Street rezoning. Communication six fifty-eight is the planning board report on Low Street and Colby Farm Lane rezoning. And, and Communication six fifty-nine is the planning board report on the signed zoning amendment.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Collectively?
Collectively.
Also, I don't think we received and filed the mayor's update, maybe we could add that.
We'll add that into.
Add that in, okay, thank you. Okay, any questions? So this is on collectively, communications, six fifty-seven, six fifty-eight, six fifty-nine, plus the mayor's update. To receive and file. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
There's one second reading appointment, it's appointment five.
The late filed two, communication six sixty.
I think we sent that to Public Works and Safety when you.
Yeah, motion to. Was it in the consent, sorry?
Yes.
Oh, it was, okay, never mind, sorry.
We accessed the delay file and sent it where it's supposed to go.
Second reading appointment is appointment five eighty-three, Omni Ranio, eleven Marquan Lane, to Commission on Disabilities, nine one twenty-eight.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Counselor Zeeb?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Your orders?
So you have one order that was continued from the previous meeting. It's order seven forty, gift acceptance from the Friends of Newbury Port trees for fifteen thousand.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none, fifteen thousand, we'll do a roll call.
Counselor Zeeb?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
The new orders this evening, the first is seven forty-two, resolution for engagement of special counsel.
Motion to refer to General Government?
Second.
And Committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole.
So motion made to refer resolution seven four-two to General Government Committee of the whole. Counselor Lane?
I just wanna speak to it, just to explain it a little bit as it's coming in. I know there's been some questions as to what the purpose here is. Essentially, this is to, I wanna clarify, like, any, any misconception that I'm trying to get us to fine upriver communities and punish those folks up there. This is to spawn some action in the CSO problem. Nothing's gonna happen, this merely gives those communities some help in getting the help they need to go to their, their representatives and say, hey, you know, they have found, and there is case law that backs this up in Boston Harbor. When they were dumping into Boston Harbor, there was some actual penalties paid because of that. I just wanna get information from a specialist, a specialized counsel, who can guide us as to what our rights are in terms of the river. We've put a lot of money into our waterfront, and to have our beaches shut down and to impact our economic, the strongest points of our, our economic season, just isn't fair to any report. It's not fair to anybody, really. It's gone on for way too long, and it's time to make some action. So this, this is one step, I hope that will spawn some action and give those communities upriver some, some real teeth, that they can go to their representatives in federal and local and state and say, we now need to get this fixed, or it's gonna cost us a lot more money, real money. The big talking point is, oh, it's, you know, it's billions and gazillions of dollars to fix. Well, I'm tired of it, quite frankly. And I think everybody that uses the river, that enjoys the river, is tired of it as well. So that's, I just wanted to explain that this is not to punish any other communities, and not looking to, you know, throw mud here or anything else. But that's, that's what it is, just to get a legal opinion and to see what our options are moving forward.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of referring to General Government and Committee of the whole say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
The next order is seven forty-three, amendment to the clerk contract.
Motion to refer to General Government?
Second.
And Committee of the whole?
And Committee of the whole, second.
So motion made to refer to General Government and Committee of the whole. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Order seven forty-four is the Federal Emergency Management Agency bio of nine seventy-fifth street.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So, this seems to be, I'm sorry, sorry, Counselor President, my apologies. This seems to be the, the crux of this is an acceptance of the gift from FEMA, or the funding from FEMA, and, and the, and then the designation of this as open space. So I don't know which takes precedent, the open space designation, or the acceptance of the substantial gift from FEMA.
Counselor Zeeb?
Yeah, this is actually, is really land use related. Direct report is behind me, I'm sure you could speak to it if you wish, but the financial end of this has actually pretty much already been squared. The city has already accepted the funds that passed through budget and finance approximately a year, eighteen months ago. And now they're trying to basically close the, you know, finish the transaction essentially. And so, this is more about land use. Again, accepting, you know, we are purchasing the property, we are gonna put an environmental restriction, so it essentially remains as open space for all of time, that's kind of the deal here. And so, in communication with the chair, planning, and the director, we all sort of agreed planning was the right direction, but if there's anything you wanna add? There's no money here, even though the money's listed. It's all already been voted on.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion is refer to planning and development. Hearing, no further discussion. All those in favor, referral to planning and development? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That would lead us to committee items.
Okay.
Finance?
So we're gonna, we'll go in the order of the packet here, so first is a motion to approve order seven thirty-six.
Second.
This is a gift acceptance valued at three.
Harmon is recusing, yeah, I think.
It's a gift acceptance, so a motion to approve. Did I get a second? All right, thank you. So this is a gift acceptance valued at three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. It is not cash gift, it's two owl units. We're obviously quite familiar with the owls, we see two of them here before us. This is being donated by the CEO, and we did take this into committee and talk about it. It is two units, they are likely intended to be used right here in the city council chambers, as we use them quite heavily. We're not aware of any, any ongoing costs to them, just to do a little double checking on that. I'm not aware of any, we, you know, we don't pay anything on these currently, they're devices. So that is the intended purpose here. The committee welcomed the gift and hoping, you know, anything that helps make the audio a little better in here is probably welcome. So it was a two to zero in committee to recommend.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We could string this out and keep Counselor Harmon waiting out there.
Counselor Harmon?
No, 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 I said, we could, we could keep talking. We have to vote, yeah, I was, I was making a joke, which I won't do again. Okay, so this was a gift acceptance, we'll, we'll do a roll call.
Counselor Zeeb?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve transfer two fifteen?
Second.
Second.
Transfer two fifteen is a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar transfer for from the Brown School Improvement Stabilization Fund to Brown School Disposition and Site Prep in the same amount, two hundred and twenty-five K. That is the full amount that currently resides in that fund. Direct report appeared before the committee on July seventeenth. As we know, we've been moving forward on this project, it's fairly well-known. The next domino, if you will, is the demolition of the gym. The city did go out to bid, following kind of closure on the order here for disposition and so forth. They received two bids to demolish the gym. One was for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and one was for four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And then they set out, of course, to try and figure out how to fund that. Initially, and upon submission of this transfer, the intent was to use three sources. Source number one would have been this Brown School Stabilization Fund, same amount, that's still being proposed today. The second would have been so-called home funds, these capital H-O-M-E. These are federal funds that are provided to the city, and I'll, I'll talk about those in a minute, pardon me. And then finally was some additional funds from the state, which was given to us by grant. We've heard a little bit, that was for the hazardous materials that has been deemed to be acceptable for this purpose. So what has changed in the intervening time? Unfortunately, it was determined that the home funds are not eligible for use. It sounds more of a timing issue than a direct, you know, use, utilization issue, but we just simply cannot get to those dollars in order, and to make the amount of time that's needed in order to keep this moving forward. So the home fund, home funding is out, so the two twenty-five remains in, that's what we're working on today. The hundred and twelve remains in, that's the state grant. And the new addition here would be the Affordable Housing Trust, you heard a little bit about that in the mayor's update. And so that was voted on, taken to the Affordable Housing Trust, and asked if they would help contribute towards this purpose. They agreed in the amount of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to use round funds. So by taking those three sources together, they're able to get to the low bid plus having a contingency. And in terms of a few other things, timeline-wise, the intent here is really looking to see if this can pass through tonight, then to execute a contract this week or next, and then to mobilize essentially as soon as possible, end of this month, possibly early next month. I walked the neighborhood and talked to a bunch of neighbors myself, and just let them know that there'd certainly be some action. Now, once the gym is demolished, the, the bid and the contract will call for grass to be planted in the space where the gym is, as a temporary holding thing, and then it will be fenced off. And then, basically, it will essentially sit until such time as the developer is ready to start the project. We did ask for some other timeline updates, so the draft purchase and sale with the developers almost finalized, they're close to execution on that. Probably still, you know, close being towards the end of the year. The developer continues to apply for grants, as we've heard ad nauseam quite a bit about the timeline on those grants. So they haven't secured funding yet, so it's, it still continues. And so it's not likely, for example, that they're gonna be starting the project end of this year in the spring, but they continue to play with the grant cycles and trying to get the funds. So I, I have told residents, and I'll say it here on the floor, that after the gym is demolished, there likely will be an unknown exact amount of time that elapses between that and sort of the next action, but that it's nice that there'll be some grass, and it will look, you know, look decent for the neighborhood in the interim. So, the motion here is, again, we're, we're just dealing really with the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar transfer, and the hundred and twelve was already accepted previously from memory, so, and then the HT has their own. own, you know, their own power on their money. So, it was, again, two to zero in committee.
Okay. Thank you. Further comments, discussion?
I'll go after, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I wasn't able to make that meeting, but I got a question about the grass.
Bless you.
Was there any conversation about, like, if there's any maintenance of that grass? Because grass is nice, but it does need to be mowed unless you want, you know, like, tick haven. It'll be good to be fenced off, but I just wonder if overgrown grass for a couple of years or a year is, like, not the most timely thing? So, I'm just curious if there was any conversation around that? Or if, like, wildflowers were considered as an alternative?
Through the chair, Andy Porter, Director of Planning and Development, working on this project. We didn't discuss that in detail, but I think the assumption right now is, obviously, the city would take care of regular mowing or maintenance of that, generally speaking, to, you know, make sure it doesn't get out of control. While it has the fee interest in the property, however, when it changes hands, that would be something we'd coordinate with the new property in Rosetta as they're doing the housing project. So, you know, I defer to the mayor's office, you know, parks and so forth, as to who might be handling that sort of thing, maintenance or facilities maintenance. But at any rate, we, obviously, we'd keep an eye on that grass, you know, during that interim time, if you will, one way or the other.
Okay, that would be important to me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And there was a question as well about the fencing, which, again, the contractor, just to clarify, the contractor owns putting up fencing around that area afterwards. However, we have the flexibility to either remove that from the contract towards the tail end or to adjust that. I know there was some question there about, you know, making use of that space in the interim time. Again, I have no particular preference in that, but just, I think we're just trying to make sure we have clarity as to, you know, what the boundaries are of certain areas. This area obviously wouldn't be used by the public when it's used for the parking area for the housing. But, again, we could coordinate in the interim time, I think, to, you know, what's needed in that space.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Z.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, that just thinking about the timeline and grass growing, you know, if the purchase and sale is executed towards the end of the year, likely closing would happen sometime in the winter. And then, because they need to show control of the site before really going for grants, so I think the mowing is going to be fairly minimal between when they finish this demolition planted, it actually grows, and then we're out of the property. And I'm sure, I'm saying it on the floor to echo the ward, too, councilors concerned the developer will want to show good faith to the neighborhood in taking care of that once they own it come spring, even if it's another year of mowing that they have to undertake. So, if I may continue, I just wanted to make a motion to amend. My amendment is fairly straightforward, I hope. It's that, in the event that there are any funds left over, that they return back to their initial source and the proportion in which they came. And if I have a second, I can explain my logic. So, we talked a little bit about this in committee, and then I've been chatting with Director Port as this is processed through. We do have three sources of funds. The grant, obviously, we're not going to give any money back. But if there are, and we hope that the contingency is unneeded, that, you know, it can just go back, again, in proportion. So, it's sort of like everybody putting in for dinner. If the bill comes in a little lower than expected, everybody gets back their money in the same proportion they put in. Otherwise, you're effectively transferring money between the sources, and I don't think that's the intent here. So, the concept of contingency and the Affordable Housing Trust putting in, sort of quote for the contingency, as, I think, as a steward of the money, and, of course, the Brown School Stabilization Fund, which I fought hard for over the years. This seems like a really fair way to do it. We've done it this way with other things. And, again, we all hope the project comes in at or near, or even under budget, and then everybody gets back their pennies, again, in proportion to what they put in, accepting, and I should make this clear in my amendment, accepting the grant, of course. So, you take the grant off the top, it's like a gift card, and then you work out the details. So, I hope you'll see fit to approve, to accept the amendment. I would appreciate it, your consideration. Thank you.
So, I'm going to, the second, Ed.
It's been seconded.
Discussion on the amendment. Council Donahue.
Thank you, President. Yeah, so, in the event that, let's say, we didn't, you know, need the contingency, that gets returned, and let's say that it came in even less, and there's money left over that would end up, you know, technically going and belonging back to the Brown School Stabilization Fund. What, my question is, what, in your mind, would that be used for if the Brown School is no longer, you know, I mean, the genesis of that fund was, if I remember correctly, and I do, was in the event that we were to rehab or save the gym, as it were. So, with this being used to demolish the gym, and then there is no more gym, like, what would that money, if in the miraculous event we came in that low, what would it actually go to theoretically? Is, I'm just curious.
May I answer the question?
Wait, sorry, excuse me, Council President, I'm going to accuse myself on this topic.
Okay. Council Z.
Yeah, thank you. No, I think it's good to all jog our memories on this. So, the intent behind the money is really that we're not selling the 100% of the property. We will continue to retain the sort of park and the public area. And this money was originally intended for anything Brown School for the neighborhood, and that would continue. My vision, if you're asking my opinion, would be to put it into there. And just as a reminder, when we had a big negotiation around the disposition, we are intending to refill this pot with a portion of the proceeds that we get from the sale of the property. And my hope is that we'll put the Article 97 property back into a nice condition and state, and the back part, which the city will continue to own, will also be made as nice as possible for the neighborhood with this money, and maybe with others if it's needed.
Council Shan.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate going back into the stabilization fund to want to make it, to go back into approving the property. I think my one concern about sending Affordable Housing Trust money into that stabilization fund for maintenance of a park, that's not the point of AHT funds. I think they are more, their funds are meant to be for affordable housing, not so much park. I think the idea of doing work to improve the park afterwards would be more CPA funds. I think I'd be a little concerned about trying to put AHT funds into the Brown School Stabilization Fund for that reason, just-
That's not what you suggested. Council McCauley and Council Z.
Yeah, sorry, I know you want to, but I'm going to kind of ask a question here. So, if there are funds that are, let's say, left over from this going forward, not saying where they are, if they're from the stabilization fund, then they could go back. But if they're from the Affordable Housing Trust, would they go back to the Affordable Housing Trust as well? Is that also part of the amendment as well, from their origin, right? So that we could avoid that? And let's say there's 10 from that and 10 from the other, just saying, right? And then, you know, we could have 10 for the park, and then 10 goes back to the affordable. Is that what the amendment will say to us, to do?
Council Z.
Yeah, it's easy. We agree. I, this cuts both ways. We don't want to move money from the Brown School Stabilization Fund into the HT or money from the HT into the stabilization. So, everybody gets back in the proportion they put in. So, I mean, that's why I'm trying to be really fair. I don't want to take money, but I also don't want to give money respectfully. It's just an even, so, if the proportion would be 225 and they're putting in 115, so it's, I'm not going to say it's two to one, but it's close. So, for every dollar there is left over, you split it in the same proportion, and that way, everybody's getting back no more and no less than what they put in, as opposed to saying, well, okay, the total bill was 450, let's take off 50 for you and then split what's left. That seems unfair to me. So, I think we're in agreement, and yes, the proportionality is exactly meant to protect both parties. You put into a pot and then you take back only in the proportion you put in.
Council Lane.
Just to be the ray of sunshine that I always am, I don't think there's going to be any money left. I actually think this is going to be short. You're looking at asbestos and hazardous materials, and the dirt there is probably going to need a lot more than 225, in my personal opinion. So, I just wanted to put my prediction out there, and when there is a request for more money, that's why. Because you're going to have asbestos underneath, and it's definitely going to cost more than that. But with that out yield and whatever y'all decide.
I'll put a note in my calendar when it's done, and we'll-
Please, yeah, call me, I'll be somewhere else.
Council Harmon.
Thank you. I think I'm stuck on the proportionality of this. So, I think, to formulate a question, and hopefully, Planning Director can answer, I wasn't at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting where this was approved, but was it your perception that the Affordable Housing Trust was funding a contingency, or were they funding a pool of money toward the demolition of the gym? Because I think it's important, their intention in approving this money coming to this project in addition to the money they've already given us. I would agree that, you know, the project itself, and I'll take the optimistic view as opposed to my colleague from Ward 6, that, you know, maybe they're, they'll come in on budget, that this contingency wouldn't be used. In my mind, that, the spirit of that is that it should be returned to the Affordable Housing Trust. That being said, if we, even being more optimistic, spend less than and don't even need, you know, don't even need the full money that they've allocated, then I would support the proportionality concept of, you know, if these people put in two to one dollars, they should go back in that way. So, if you could answer the question about Affordable Housing Trusts?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the question. Actually, just to clarify, because, you know, Council Z summarized everything to date, sort of in terms of up to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We had the Housing Trust meeting was actually last week, and they voted to appropriate the 115,000, 138. But that breakdown includes the 73 and change for the base, what we call the base bid. So, that's the contract being executed at the beginning, that's the base of the contract. It's not including any contingency, something we discovered during the work that's not accounted for by the plans and specs. Obviously, we've covered hazmat and so forth in the plans and specs, but, you know, you never know, there's something that sometimes comes up. So, that's what the contingency is for. It's typically around 10%, and that's what the Housing Trust provided in there. So, they understood at the time of their vote that that 41 and change was for contingency, meaning any funds that were unused, or if we didn't need to use those funds, it would go back to the Housing Trust account. In this case, if the condition is placed on here, this would require me to go back to the Housing Trust. They don't presently have a meeting until the beginning of September right now, but they had voted on their end to do that. Contingency part of it, remember, if you will, that I had to, after the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and when I went to the Housing Trust, ask them to increase the amount that we were initially discussing with them because we could not use the home fund. So, they actually contributed 75,000 and change more than we were initially expecting to ask the Housing Trust because they were essentially filling the hole of these home funds, which could be used by Zeta down the road, but cannot be used by us right now in terms of demolition work. So, that's the reason why, sort of in trying to balance out this discussion we were having when we were initially contemplating the split, I was asking the Trust increase their amount by 75,000 and change more. And so, at that point, it seemed to be more reasonable to, you know, leave the contingency in this piece here. And that's what the Housing Trust had assumed when they took their vote, was that their amount included that 41 and change for contingency. Thank you.
Council Z.
Yeah, I'm just, so, the Affordable Housing Trust acts as a fiduciary for their funds. They get to say what they would like and vote the way they wish. I'm trying to do the same for my ward and to protect the monies that are going in. It does not seem like anybody here, if we just had a raw transfer that said, let's take 25,000 from the Brown School Stabilization Fund and put it in the Affordable Housing Trust, just move the money, that it would pass because it's not logical. This isn't, it's just a way to do it fairly. The proportionality is a measure of fairness, really, to give back the money from whence it came. We do this all the time. If free cash gets dumped into something, we want the money to come home. Again, it's only relevant if the project comes in under. If it comes in at, or over, nobody's getting any money back. And in fact, probably will come back here and say, okay, now give us, at that point, there'll be nothing left in the Brown School Stabilization Fund, give us free cash to do it. Secondarily, you know, with due respect to the Planning Director, sort of portrays this like there's an element of generosity here. This is, I mean, we're all doing to try and further the public policy goal, the Affordable Housing Trust's goal is to generate affordable housing trust. You could make an argument, they should fund the entire demolition, and I think it would hold water. So, asking for a little bit of fairness and then getting turned around to, well, what was the intent of the Affordable Housing Trust? Which, by the way, we have no vote on. We're only arguing with you here about the 225 or debating with you on it. It just seems like a fair thing to do and to avoid that mixing of money that seems to be what people don't want to do.
Okay. So, the discussion is on the motion to amend.
Correct.
With proportionality. So, Council Donahue.
Thank you. Just for clarity, through the President to the Chair, Avina, so, is there, like, the way that you have it written, is it like, if the demolition comes in under, you know, miracle, is it, are we just splitting, you know, 50/50, some goes back to the original, you know, Brown School's gym stabilization fund, and the other half goes to the Affordable Housing Trust? Or is it literally, like, trickled down to, I mean, I would imagine that the Affordable Housing Trust would come ahead of the stabilization fund because it's meant for, you know, that very specific purpose. And the CPC funds would absolutely be going to the beautification of the property around the building. So, I'm not 100%, like, I 100% want the beautification for the neighborhood the same, I'm just not sure that the gym stabilization fund or the Brown School Stabilization Fund, like, I guess I just need clarity on, is it 50/50, or is it, like, does it, is there, like, a cascade where, you know, one is, takes precedent over the other? Like, because originally, the baseline should be the Affordable Housing Trust gets what they put in back, is my thought. And then, should there be something left over beyond that, sure, put it, I don't know where else we could put it. So, I just, I guess it would go back into the property.
Okay.
But that's my, I need a little clarity.
Council McCauley.
Yeah, so, I'll use an example. I did some quick math. If there's $10,000 left over and the proportionality, the city would get 6,500. The Affordable Housing Trust would get 35. It's a 65/35 split accordingly to where the money is going forward. I understand the rationale we're going through. I agree with the Ward 6 Councilor that, I think it's going to be zero going forward. And I can say with certainty, it's not going to be $100,000 less for the project. And so, but the proportionality works out to 65/35 for those who are keeping score.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that include the contingency?
All together, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Council Z.
Yeah, just my final comment. The 65/35 is not a made-up number or something about negotiating it like buying a used car. This is just the proportion of the money being put in. One, so it's like going out to dinner with your friends, the bill comes in less, one person, one friend put in 100, Darren put in 20. Probably doesn't make sense to just take the money that's left over and give it half and half or 100% to one. You'd be like, well, I put in 5X what you put in, so maybe we could split it that way. It really isn't just logical. My two ray of sunshine colleagues think it's not coming in under. I maybe agree with them on that. But if it does, and, again, if we have a higher bill, we may have in the same debate about whether we're going to share in that excess cost proportionally, or if we can, we're going to end up pumping it in. But that's a problem for another day. This is the challenge today, so.
Never oil, that says market rate.
Council Donahue.
Thank you. Yes, so, I wonder if the sponsor of the amendment would be willing to compromise? Yes, so, I wonder if the sponsor of the amendment would be willing to compromise? Because my thought, my only concern is the contingency portion in that, I feel like, because that's the, you know, what we have to put in if it goes over. And that was directly from the Affordable Housing Trust and not the 225 from the Brown School Funds. Can we take that out of the equation? And just, if it comes in without using the contingency, that portion would go to the Affordable Housing Trust, but anything under that would be split proportionately? Would that be amenable at all for consideration?
No, I appreciate the effort, as always. I just look at, this is just a project, you know. If you want, I can amend and say the 225 is actually 175 for the base bid and 50 for the contingency and start getting into like, an infinite Pandora's Box with it. There's no such thing. It's just a project. It's going to cost $411,000 plus a contingency to have in the bank to demolish the gym. So I'll take my shot here, and again, I hope people can see the fairness argument. That's all.
Could the clerk just repeat the language of the amendment, just so we're...
So the motion to amend, and I'll just be explicit with it, is that any funds left over in excess, excluding grant funds, shall be returned back to their funding sources in proportion to the amount of their contribution. It's a lot of big words, sorry.
All right, so everyone clear on the amendment? We'll do a roll call on it.
On the amendment, Counselor Ziede?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan is recused. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes. Two amendment passes, so back to the main motion as amended, which is to approve the transfer.
We're not done yet. One more vote.
That was the amendment.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll call on the overall amendment, excuse me, the overall transfer.
Counselor Ziede?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan's recused.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
All right, next up is a motion to approve transfer 238. Second. 238 is a capital project stabilization fund of 24,500. New Report High School Property Condition Assessment, same amount. We have James McSweeney from the schools, the facilities manager, appear again before the committee on July 17th. This is really, as the title implies, focused on high school. We've talked a little bit now about these property assessments. And so, we have recently adjudicated one on this building. It did not pass, but this is a similar concept, similar firm, Rinkis, which we've heard the name a couple of times, essentially paying them $25,000 or so to come in and give a broad-based assessment of the physical structure of the schools. Some of the priorities mentioned were engineering, prioritization, electrification efforts, some of the ongoing efforts they have, particularly with masonry, for example, on the side of the building and as well as the retaining walls and so forth that there are concerns over. So we did ask similar questions to prior efforts on this. For example, you know, would the schools be able to absorb the $25,000 cost rather than coming to the city for it? The answer at the time was not, didn't seem to be possible. And we had some additional questions about scopes, and the scope was discussed to be similar to the library scope, so I think there's HVAC, roof, again, masonry, physical structure, things like that, safety, et cetera. And then we turned our conversation a little bit towards the CIP, wherein really the only thing that was in the CIP in the five-year horizon was the roof. And then we sort of talked about, there's another five-ish, five-and-a-half-ish million-dollar project that fell quote below the line, that was not, sort of not on the five-year horizon. And clearly, that doesn't, didn't seem to come across as that that would be the timeline horizon for some of these projects. Meaning, in other words, that James McSweeney sort of indicated, there's definitely some more urgency than what the five, than not being in the five-year plan would sort of imply. And then finally, we did learn or understand that there's some sort of ADA compliance issue right now on the front of the building with, I think with the entry area, and that they're trying to do some Band-Aids to resolve that. And in the end, the committee did not, at least the members present did not see fit to support this. It comes out of committee with a negative recommendation of zero to two, and one absent.
Okay, further discussion?
Sure.
Counselor Lane?
As you pointed out, the name Rinkis keeps coming up a lot. I'm just curious as to, again, procurement and how we're getting Rinkis consecutively time and time again. Is there, can I ask the administration if there are a reason for this company keeps winning these bids? Or does this go around procurement law? And also, my secondary question is, they quoted us $52,000 for a condition for the building that we're in right now, which I have to think is about a third of the high school's square footage. Why? And why does this company keep getting the bids to do these assessments? So if I could get some answers on that, it'd be wonderful. Sunshine out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So we do go through procurement and we get quotes. We do not have the current contract, as we're still waiting for the transfer to proceed. So we would wait, obviously, for the contract. But usually, you get three quotes for those types of services. And they have been the service that has just been recommended frequently. But we do follow 30B and go through the procurement protocols. I also just want to clarify one thing. This PCA was in the five-year CIP. It was ranked number 15 in the administration's CIP, and then it moved down to CIP 19 in the council's version. So I just wanted to clarify that because that is true, that it was in the five years. The thinking is, we do a PCA, and then that would help us understand the HVAC, electricity, and the building conditions. The estimated future years in FY '27 and FY '28 was roughly $3 million. And we were hoping to get around $2 million from utility incentives. We actually have already had some conversations. So I just wanted to clarify that, just for the council. It was in the five-year CIP, and that did actually rank pretty high on both the administration and the councils. So just for clarification, I'm sorry if there was confusion.
Just one follow-up. Who puts those bids out to these companies? Who decides what company we're going to recommend to us to approve? Is that special projects? Or is that, is this, in this case, the schools, or...
So in this case, both the working and coordination, the special projects manager, and the facilities director over at NHS, at the New Report Schools.
Counselor Wright, then Counselor Khan?
Just a question to the administration, a follow-up from our last meeting. We asked for the capital improvement plan to be restated as we voted it. I'm just asking if that's been done and published to the website yet.
Yes, it is on the website now. There is a separate link just right below. On the budget page, it will just say CIP, council version, and it has the ranking. The finance director also went through and tried to make sure the funding sources that were part of the debate were there as well, and crossed out any changes that the council did during that discussion.
Okay, Counselor Ziede, or Counselor Khan, did you have...
Well, I'll defer to the chair. If there's more to add?
No, I was going to speak for myself, so I've already spoken.
Thank you, Council President. I was not there at our Budget and Finance meeting to discuss this, but if I was, I would have voted in favor. I think many of us may have done the tours around the high school, maybe it was last year or the year before. These systems are definitely problematic, and I think one of the reasons for the comprehensive condition, irregardless of what we think of Rinkis or not, the work needs to be done. We need to have this done so that we can understand, if you're going to be improving the plaster over the auditorium, then you need to understand what's above that and what might be failing, what might be leaking. So to me, I, there's no way I would not say no to this money, 24,500. It was in the CIP. It's been no mystery exactly what's going to be gained for our high school. I personally, I do have a child in the school. I am in that building quite a bit for every different events that they have. And it is really, it should be a source of our pride. Our high school and its teams and our students are doing incredible things. It would be a shame to let this facility, which is somewhat also historical, I don't know exactly what we characterize that, but anytime people come through, that is a very, we should be proud of what we have there. And so this, to me, is an investment. It's an investment to get the strategy in place on how we want to tackle the many areas of failures and failing points, not to also ignore what's happening on the exterior by that stairway that a lot of kids are using. So there definitely needs to be some thought process here. So I will be supporting this. I encourage my colleagues to as well. Thank you.
Further discussion, Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you very much. I did sit down on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and a couple of things I just want to share. They were kind of alarming to me along the way. The 24,500 isn't the figure here, isn't the doll, isn't the issue here. I do think the schools should be able to absorb that. They're already absorbing. They usually absorb 150,000, $160,000 of capital expense anyway within their budget. We just gave them $40 million. They could shift the money around. This is a priority. The things that were disturbing to me along the way is that when the facilities manager was here, he talked about the CIP and talked about it was a $5 million number. And then when we dug into it a little bit more, saying, you know, were these, were these, you know, did we do any evaluation? Did we do any scientific kind of evaluation on this? And the answer was, no, we kind of winged it. So we said, you know, HVACs cost about this, so we just put that number in. And then, you know, a plaster costs this, so we kind of winged it a little bit along the way. And this is really, this money is really to get a firm quote for some of the things that they kind of winged along the way, if you will, going forward. And that 5 million could, without, could very easily be 6.5 or 7 million because they just went with, you know, what they thought were industry averages, et cetera, along the way. So I do think this is needed for the schools, but I think it's more a priority for the schools than it is for the stabilization fund to be able to do that. And I would, in its current form, I would ask the schools to be, to shift monies around and to pick up the 24/5 going forward. But I do think it's worthwhile endeavor so they can quantify some of the things that they proposed to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harmon.
Thank you. I agree with my colleague from Word 5. This is a worthwhile effort, and I think, you know, when things come before us, a boiler unexpectedly breaks and we have a big-ticket item, I often hear conversation around, why didn't we know that? I've never had a kid in New Report Schools, I probably won't. But I agree with my at-large colleagues' comments around this being a community asset. I attended events at the high school. I think it is, it goes beyond just a school's responsibility. I think it's also, you know, a gem of our sort of main thoroughfare down High Street toward downtown. So I will support this. I think I supported the City Hall version of it as well for very similar reasons, you know, capital maintenance and oversight of that, and making sure that we are able to plan for that. If it's going to be 5 million on a winged budget, or if it's going to be 7 million on a more thorough estimate, I want to know that as soon as possible so that we can incorporate that into our plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Ziede?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things I want to say. First is, just to, you know, I'm really happy to continue to refer back to the capital improvement plan because I think it's helping us just sort of institutionalize it, incorporate it into our way of thinking and our decision-making. I am perplexed that there's a council version. We have one capital improvement plan. There's no such thing as the council version and the mayor version unless we're running like, parallel governments, which I don't think we are. So that's an interesting way to refer to it, and rank this way in one version and in this way in another version. There's only one version, and that's the version that passed here. In fact, by our charter, we pass it by resolution. So that is the capital improvement plan. You don't have to like it, but it is the reality of life. Second thing is, yes, this was listed, but it fell below the line. And the line was a construct created by the administration to say, this is where the five-year ends. I mean, they drew a line and said, everything below here is not on the horizon for the next five years. So while the direction of the debate has taken, do you value the high school and do you think it's a historic gem for the community? What we're really talking about is, are we just spending $25,000 and maybe more to just make a report that will have no value in five or more years when we actually get around to this? And are we still, despite having this, to the Word 4 Counselor's point, still going to have the boiler blow up anyways? Because instead of chasing the problems we already know about that are, depending on the committee meeting you attend, are catastrophic, we're just spending money on more studies. And that's always been my concern. We've known the roof's been leaking for years, we've dodged and weaved it with studies. We're finally addressing it, that's good. We clearly know the HVAC system is a problem. We're going to do three or five years more of studies, and then we're still going to have the Band-Aid expenses, which are just going to keep going up. So that was the nature of my dissent on this, and I stand by that analysis, just as I did for this building. There are already very many known issues that facilities should already be able to write a report about right in-house based on what bubble gum and duct tape they're putting on, on a daily and weekly basis. I yield.
Do you have further discussion, Counselor Khan?
Yes, thank you very much. Just last few points I want to make. A couple of things that I heard, that I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. I think one is the argument of whether or not the 24,500 should be coming from the school side versus the city side. The CIP, I know that there is an effort done when the CIP is presented to the school committee. And I do want to kind of emphasize, there's a conversation, discussion with the school committee, another elected body, and then the council, an elected body. And the CIP comes together cohesively across the board with all these different departments, where the schools is a department. So in terms of the, where do we draw these monies from? I have yet to see, and maybe someone could correct me if I'm wrong, that we included capital in the schools on its own line item. And maybe that's a question I'm asking, that I missed something? Because my understanding is, we have not done that. So I don't know if that's a suggestion. The second thing I want to also kind of highlight here is, you know, knowing an issue and thinking how you could fix it and how much to spend. I cannot tell you how many times, and I know this is a bigger magnitude issue, but the tie-in bond report, which I think many of us have referenced, it is helpful to get another kind of third-party review of all the issues going on. We've been hearing from the facilities folks at the schools for a long time on many of the issues that we've been hearing about, especially with the high school roof. So I'm not at all saying that they're not qualified to tell us that here's really where we are going to prioritize and how much it's going to cost. If they are asking for this, I am going to listen. There is a reason to get an independent assessment, something to help them kind of identify that timeline, and the best fiduciary responsible way that we should be tackling these issues, which we know are becoming more and more there. So that's all, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Counselor McCauley?
I just want to answer the Counselor's question. From the city's standpoint, we allocate to the schools a line item, and they can allocate it any way they want. So if they want to buy new bleacher pads, they can do that. If they want to fix the concrete outside, they can do that. They can shift their money around accordingly along the way. But they only get one lump sum, and they can shift it any way that they like, so.
I do want to respond there. Thank you. Yeah, I understand that aspect. I guess I was really wondering how we have the capital stabilization fund line item? I don't think they have. Because if you know, we do give them one number, but we do get the whole kind of spreadsheet on the different line items for the schools. I don't believe that is in there. That's kind of maybe something we could confirm. And in the future, if we want to talk about that, that could be an option and a way to move ahead on things like this. Thank you.
Counselor Harmon, Counselor Lane?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, so the, I've pulled up the document that was referenced earlier. It's labeled as fiscal year '26 to '30 capital project listing voted June 18, 2025. There's no reference to a city council version. Additionally, as I review it, this item falls at the new number 19, which puts it one above where we ranked the Indian Hill Raw Water Line Phase 2, two above where we ranked the Fire Headquarters, and just below the Water and Sewer Highway Downtown Utility Upgrades. So I just, for the sake of sharing with my colleagues, I just wanted to let you know what I'm looking at in terms of the work that we did in June.
Further discussion, Counselor Lane?
Just, did the middle school condition property report come up? Or is that going to be lumped in at some point? Or are we going to look at paying another 25,000 or whatever Rinkis comes in at the low bid as in the future? Just in terms of saving some money on either our side or the school's side?
It's not in the capital improvement.
Thank you, Counselor. Just during this CIP process, the facilities director and the school department did not submit anything for the Knox Middle School at this time that made that list.
So, do you think we're going to have that soon?
I don't want to speak on behalf of the school department in the sense of, they haven't put that in front of the administration at this point. I think they're continuing the ongoing maintenance. I know there's the roof project as well. This was a concern for the high school specifically by their facilities director. So I think as far as the urgency for some of the issues, especially as we're doing the roof project, to advance forward for the high school.
All right, any further discussion? So a motion on the floor is to, I believe, approve the transfer, although it came out without a positive, with a negative recommendation. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call on this. So this is, transfer 238, roll call?
Counselor Ziede?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?[1694.26]
Next is a motion to approve Transfer 239.
Second.
So this is coming out of committee. It is a sewer retained earnings of $100,000 to wastewater treatment facility critical infrastructure project, same amount. I immediately need to amend this. It was amended in committee, and I don't know, we missed in the middle here, but sewer retained earnings source should actually be Capital Stabilization Fund. And the reason for that, first, maybe I'll take a second on that.
Second.
Let's see. Unless the President won't accept it as friendly, since you're the sponsor?
That seems friendly. Yeah, if you could just say it again, just sort of.
Sure. The source of funds, instead of being DPS sewer retained earnings, the fund is the Capital Stabilization Fund. So let me just explain that first, and then I'll give you the details. So in the process of the budget, remember I kept saying on the second page, we have these transfers into the Cap Stabilization Fund. Some of it came from the general fund, but there were also transfers made from the sewer retained earnings and the water retained earnings into the Capital Stabilization Fund. So the money's already come, in this case, from sewer into the Capital Stabilization, and now we're tapping it for this specific purpose. If we were to go back to the retained earnings again, we'd in a sense be double-dipping. So that's the reason that was brought to us by the finance director. The committee didn't see any issue with that. So back to the project at hand. This is the wastewater treatment facility protection project, so it's sometimes known as the wing walls or the wall project. But basically, everybody's familiar, I think, for the most part with the wastewater treatment facility located on Water Street. In sort of the initial phase of this project, it was really the rail trail revetment. Most people associate that with the rail trail, but a big part of it was to create elevation in front of the plant, between the plant and the water, and then we put the trail on top of it. In a sense, this is Phase Two, and that's to bring protection up the sides of it and then get up to the, essentially, to keep it simple, to get up to the elevation of Water Street itself. And so the idea is to go around the perimeter of this, at least on the two additional sides, and then on the front side with water with wells, for lack of a better term. And then the fourth side is that revetment project that already exists. So this, they've already been working on this for several years. I know the council's had a little bit of information, but it hasn't been on the forefront. It wasn't the CIP. They're about 80% through design. They were able to fund that 80% with money they already had put into funds that were accessible to them without needing approval of the council, and that's how they were able to get to 80%. Now they are needing to finish the design, and that's the remaining 20%, and that's what this $100,000 is. It is coming from sewer retained funds. The total cost of the project, construction-wise and so forth, is around $5.2 million. That is, again, we had a lot of debate during our CIP about the timing of this, but put that aside for today. This is to complete the design. Concurrently, they are also before Conservation Commission right now for permitting. And the permitting process is interesting. Locally here, they've had to file a new notice of intent. Essentially, it's like a new project, but at the state level with the so-called MIPA, Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency, they're essentially doing an amendment or an addition to the prior project which approved the revetment that was already done. So they have some permitting work to do, but they are in the process of doing so. The last thing I can tell you is just a brief description of the project itself. So they did consider several different materials for this wall. They landed upon a product that they thought, A, was feasible on-site with some of the geotechnical stuff they learned when they did borings and so forth, and that's really this like corrugated steel kind of wall. And they also wanted to avoid too much pile driving, so there were a number of factors that went into what the land and the soil could handle, what would be effective, of course, considering, you know, aesthetics a little bit, maybe not at the top of the list. So anyways, it will go around the plant, and the wall is, you know, at its high points, closest to the river, say, five or six feet, and then will be hidden a little bit by a fence. As they come up towards Water Street, when you say you're at the corner of where the rail trail, the AYC is, if you're at the top of there, stay standing right by the plant building, what we maybe think of as the plant, the wall would be about two and a half, three feet tall. It's like a sitting wall. And then there'd be a couple of pieces that they bring in and, you know, put in when there's a storm event expected to close off the gaps that allow vehicles into the plant. So they want to be shovel-ready. They want to try and get grants. That's why they want to finish the design and finish the permitting. We did talk briefly about the Clarifier Project, which is moving on somewhat of a parallel path, but there's no immediate plans to fund that. And this one also has some funding challenges when it comes to the broader project. It was 2 to 0 in committee, and I'll speak again on my word briefly later.
Discussion? Just a quick point of information is the, what they're envisioning now, and I know it's going into final design, is it similar to the renderings from February?
Okay, thank you. So, absolutely. I just want to speak, this is like a squarely Ward One thing. The biggest concern my neighbors have is really just unintended consequences, really would be the best way to say it. Obviously, this is a major piece of critical infrastructure for the city. If the plant is down, I'll spare you the details, but it's not a good thing for the city. At the same time, it is nestled right into the, you know, right into a neighborhood effectively, and you're essentially creating a walled garden where the plant is protected, and to the point, in fact, that the project includes pumps to pump water out of the plant, because you're building, you know, you're building an island, so you've got to pump water out. And I think my neighbors are rightfully concerned that they don't want to have flooding. I have beaten this up as much as I can. I met with the engineer. I've met with the project manager from the planning office. They all feel confident the design will not create those unintended, it won't make anything worse. I don't know that it'll make anything better for those neighbors, but they argue confidently that it will not make it worse. And they have offered a concession in the form of a check valve to prevent water from backwashing up from the river. One of the big concerns, the river would come up and then actually just come back up, in addition to water coming down, because much of the up-high street ridge and so forth drains down right into this area, passes through some pipes, one of which has to be relocated. So I am nervous about it, and I recognize my neighbor's concern, but I'm also balancing that against the critical infrastructure need here, and so, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough issue. And I deal with similar things out on Plum Island, and this is an oft-conversation. So just wanted to get my ward's concerns on the record.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Khan?
Yeah, actually, this is for the Ward One Counselor, too. So I appreciate you giving the comment from your ward. I think we all got an email from a resident regarding the flood protection plan and whatnot. So I'm assuming that you are kind of monitoring that. I've been kind of deferring to you, but if there is any need for us to kind of have a matter or a discussion to bring to one of our committees to further, to kind of flesh through this, I would really appreciate it, or know how we could respond to residents directly, too.
Yes, absolutely. So to the credit of the planning office and DPS, they did have a neighborhood meeting. I won't say it was like hundreds of people attended, but a few people, especially Director Butters, attended. Yes, I've been communicating with the resident. I think we all were on that email, and just trying, trying the best. In terms of further discussion, it's a really tough one, because they got to 80% design, frankly, without coming before the councils. So the trajectory now is much more fine. It's much more narrow. There's, you know, redoing the whole idea, and there are only so many ways you can protect a piece of infrastructure like this. I mean, you need to keep the water out of it. How can you do that? So my inclination was to really, frankly, advocate heavily for that check valve, which I, last conversation with Jordi Vining in the planning office, was that we were successful in that advocacy. In terms of how to respond to the resident, that's been my response, is I'm trying to advocate for the things I can, recognizing that we're at 80% design and they're into permitting. We could send it to committee now. I'm not sure how full it will be, and then someday they will come in with a bond order ostensibly to fund this thing, and then I think the debate opens up anew. It's an even tougher time. So I really welcome any support, and I appreciate the comment in support of Ward One.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so I'm in support of this in general. I just want to offer some background. We in PWS took the presentation from the planning and the Water and Sewer Commission, excuse me, the Water and Sewer Department, and specifically the consultant to move forward. Yes, it was 80% design going forward, and yes, we saw areas for improvement. We did have some public comment. Check valve was definitely one of those items that crept up. But there are some, there are some additional items that, in questioning, I think they'll go back and do some research and make sure. Example being is there are drains that come from the feeder streets down into Water Street along the way, and right now, they empty into a drain and they empty into the Meramec going forward. When this is built and around, they've got to build an alternative pathway for that water to go that doesn't flood the area we're trying to keep dry, and as well, doesn't back up and affect the residents along the streets as well. Those types of drainage issues were brought up, and I think they're going through some machinations to try to figure out a way to do that. It's a long way around to say, yes, we support, we brought it back here. They supported it in, we supported it in committee. They, we supported their plans going forward into permitting phase along the way. But I do think that overall, we want to have close contact on that for edification for the residents, as well as improvements that can go along the way that isn't a redesign, but actually just some minor modifications along the way. So just thought I'd pass that along.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Zied?
Just one last thing. I want to reinforce that this is before the Conservation Commission, and in fact, it's docketed for tomorrow night. And just seeing here, it looks like there might be a request to continue, but that's probably the opportunity for residents. I mean, Conservation is jurisdictionally the body that will directly address engineering questions about drainage and so forth, maybe in a way at a level that we wouldn't. So I've been encouraging residents I talk to to follow that process closely, attend, submit comment if you're concerned, because of course, Conservation can push them to make changes to the plan as well if they see things over that we wouldn't or that they see from other projects. So it looks like it might be continued, but they are technically on the agenda for tomorrow.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to approve Transfer 241, pardon me, Capital Stabilization 39-1 to Plum Island Chlorine Booster, same amount.
Second.
So I'm probably going to defer primarily to Counselor Wright, but this is a longstanding project to make a modification to how water flows out to Plum Island. The primary issue right now is that essentially flow is restricted to the island. If there's a fire, somebody has to physically drive out to the bridge and turn a valve in order to allow for increased flow so that the fire departments that are responding, Newbury Port or Newbury, to be able to have enough water to obviously suppress fires and do the work that they need to do. With this chlorine booster upgrade, that process becomes automated, and you eliminate, you know, calling somebody on call or something like that in the unfortunate and unlikely event that there's a large fire. And I say unlikely, but there have been some significant fires in the last 10 years, unfortunately, out on the island, one I remember quite well. So I think generally speaking, the committee was very happy to see this coming forward and finally getting done, certainly as the Ward Counselor, I would concur. Last thing is just, you know, they do hope to get it done as soon as possible, but they're talking largely about December or so, because they don't pump chlorine to the island. That's not necessary in the system in the off-season, but it is necessary in the hot season, warm season, to treat the water. So the thinking was, they wait till it's colder, then they don't have, then they don't have to take a system offline in order to be able to replace it. But we did, and Counselor Wright impressed upon them the desire to move this as fast as possible. So 2 to 0 on committee.
Counselor Wright?
Yes, I'm very pleased to see the funding here now. It's been a long road. I've always been advocating strongly for the Water and Sewer Commission to have funded this in year one of my four years on the council. The reason that this is so important is that if somebody needed to manually stop at the 95 intersection to allow water to flow to the west end of Newbury Port to put out a fire, there would be an uproar for that to have to happen in our city. And this, in my opinion, has been completely misnamed. It's not the Plum Island Turnpike Chlorine Booster Station Upgrade. It's, it should have been highlighted as a public safety issue. It's, to me, it's, you know, for $139,000 out of Water and Sewer Retained Earnings, when we're considering spending $5 million on meters, is just very frustrating. So I'm hopeful that everybody will support this transfer. I know I've been banging this drum for a long time, but it's really, it really adds to the perception that Plum Island, both the Newbury and the Newbury Port side, are the redheaded step-children of children of Newbury Port. There hasn't been a single piece of tarmac delivered there, and there's no plans for it. But I'm very pleased that this is finally going into, and going to be part of a solution that addresses the public safety issues.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Yeah, I just pointed to the administration. I have to agree, the title of this is very misleading and begged a lot of questions. So, you know, I think to the out-ludge Counselor's point, this is a major safety concern, and it would not be acceptable in any other part of the city. So long time coming, and maybe moving forward with these kind of projects on Plum Island, we name them appropriately. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Last one is motion to approve Transfer 242, Paid Parking $345,000 to Downtown Lighting.
Second.
All right. So I think we have a decent bit of familiarity with the ongoing light, downtown light replacement project. So a good portion of this transfer is for replacing. And, but this one is unique in the sense that this also includes 18 new lights to be installed on so-called Upper State Street in advance of the proposed Mill and Overlay. You know, they've got to run conduit and wire and all that stuff, so they're trying to put that in. So this is the next phase, if you will. So there would be 18 new lights on State Street, and this funding includes the whole thing, like the conduit, the wire, the running of the wire, the labor, the physical posts and lights and all that itself. And then it also includes, this is to replace 47 lights on Water Street, you know, coming on the other side of downtown now, just the toppers, though, which is what we've been doing on all the other ones. This is all coming. They're all proposed to come from paid parking. There's $2.3 million in there. This is $345,000 transfer. This is not the final phase. The way we understand it from Special Projects Manager Kim Turner is that there's one more phase after this to finish it off. And in terms of funding sources, this was not eligible for, you know, we did some out of CPA in the past, but they were in a park, Patrick Tracy Square. None of this is in a park, so it wasn't eligible for those funds. You could certainly have considered things like free cash and so forth, but as a downtown improvement, it certainly fits within the paid parking funds parameters, and so for that reason, they recommended it. If approved, they would get going on the new, the new stuff ASAP again, because they want to beat the paving crews before they show up in the fall or so, or right after when the parklets are pulled, I think, is what's anticipated. It was 2 to 0 on committee.
I would also note as a point of information, mention of an earmark from Senator Tar for $50,000, and he may have the check in his pocket right now.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley? I heard a hundred.
Those 50s are.
Good to see you, Senator Tar. Any further discussion? Thank you, Counselor Zied, for that explanation. Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. Yeah, this is, this is really exciting, and I just, I do hope that there is support for this. The extension of the lighting up State Street has been something that I've been hoping to see happen in my tenure. It has been a request from the, a lot of the businesses that go up beyond Richdales and towards the library. There's been a lot of growth in the past few decades of that corridor of State Street that we really didn't have when, you know, the sort of ambient lighting was installed downtown. I don't know why, really, it stopped at Plaza Street, but there's been so much more development up that way, and frankly, it's really quite pitch black when you walk past Richdales. And so for the residents, for the businesses, it's been a long time coming. The folks who live at that portion of State Street, the businesses in that portion of State Street, have been begging for this. So yes, it was not eligible for, to be done with CPC funds when we did the parks lights at Patrick Tracy Square, et cetera. So this is huge, because you can't expect people to just, you know, want to go up a dark street and shop or dine or anything else, or go home. So it's huge. It's a safety issue. It's an access issue, and now we'll have equity on State Street. So I hope that you can all appreciate that and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on Transfer 242.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
That's it for budget. I just want to note that we have moved our standing meeting, which typically would have been this Thursday. We're currently slated for next Wednesday, August 13. We'll continue to, we actually have an extraordinarily light amount of business. We have one vehicle, so we will figure out what to do with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lane?
Can I just pause for a minute? I know you mentioned Senator Tar. I just want to be respectful of him. I have an inkling that he's here to speak to the resolution for special counsel and give us an update. Is there a possible pause that we could take to allow him the floor for comments? To be respectful of his time.
Senator, if you want to speak to that, we did refer it to committee, and yeah, if you want to take the floor, your name, we don't need your address, we know.
Thank you, Ms. President, and through you to the members of the council. Actually, my address, if I continue to be spending time here, will probably be someplace in Newbury Port very soon. Thank you.
I just wish to know that we passed that unanimously to move to General Government Committee, just to give you a big.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that, and I wanted to weigh in on this, because, number one, I appreciate the proactive stance that the council is moving toward with regard to this issue. It's something that's of concern to all of us. It's something that needs to be addressed, and it's something that we have been working in the region very collaboratively to try to address for quite some time. And I want to hearken back just for a moment to our former state senator, my predecessor, Senator DeZoglio, who had led efforts to try to pull Senator DeZoglio, who had led efforts to try to pull the region together, to try to work in a collaborative fashion to be able to support a regional solution to this problem. And those efforts, following her departure, did subside for a while, but now they have been reinvigorated. And I would point out that there are folks in this community, members of ACES have been heavily involved, the mayor's been heavily involved, others have been heavily involved in trying to pull together a regional collaborative. And I would point out that that regional collaborative necessarily needs to cross the border, because some of the plants that are discharging into the river that are problematic are in New Hampshire. And so Senator Ed Kennedy, who represents the city of Lowell, and I have been working to pick up the pieces of all of this and reconstruct that regional effort. And we are in the midst of that effort right now, Mr. President, and I'm pleased to report that we have been gaining momentum in terms of having people come to the table. We have been meeting, actually, at the Lowell wastewater treatment plant, and our intent is for our next meeting to be in the city of Newburyport. So we would invite all of you to come to that meeting, and to come to any of the meetings of this group. We have endeavored to try to transmit an invitation to all of the local officials along the river, you can imagine that's quite a few people, but would be happy to make sure that you find out the details of the next meeting. And I think it's important to recognize that there is work being done along these lines, and one of the things that my staff has done is research all of the permit holders for NPDES permits that discharge into the river or its tributaries. And so we understand that universe, and it's fair to say that there are about five or six that disproportionately contribute the majority of the untreated discharge when a CSO event occurs. And so we've focused on them, certainly Lowell is one of them, Nashua is another one, Manchester, New Hampshire is another. And I'm pleased to report that we're having good discussions about that. Now, when it comes to legal recourse, I would just point out that in many cases, communities like Lowell are the subject of consent decrees, where a negotiated settlement has been reached, as between the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Environmental Protection, or in the case of New Hampshire, their Department of Environmental Services. And so there is some language that governs the requirement for them to have remediation efforts, that's number one. Number two, each of them possesses a permit under the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES. And those permits set limits for how much untreated discharge can occur on an annual basis. And when those limits are violated, there is a fine, and there could be potential other actions. So I wouldn't want anyone to think that there are not regulations in place and there's not enforcement taking place. The biggest challenge that we face is trying to design solutions to prevent this from happening. And the reason for that is very simple. It would be very cost ineffective to design a wastewater treatment plant to accommodate every rainfall incident. And so what's happening now, the state of the art, is trying to design, if you will, appurtenances to wastewater treatment plants that can contain that stormwater until it can be treated after the rainfall event has ended. And that's what we're working on. We earnestly believe that this will require, to get the job done, in wholesale, because there are individual efforts going on. In fact, I note that Senator Markey recently achieved a $42 million earmark for the city of Lowell, and that covers a part of its cost, but not nearly all of it. And that is true at these other plants. And so our belief is that by working together and making the case to the federal and state governments, we can work toward a comprehensive solution. And what's on the table right now is trying to figure out the best avenue to have somebody design what that solution would look like, what each plant would need, what it would cost, what they're already doing, what they have funding for, and what they need funding for. And so we're, our next meeting will be to discuss that data, and we're also having discussions with the head of Massachusetts DEP, our commissioner, and the commissioner in New Hampshire. And actually, I had a conversation recently, we're hoping to have the Region One EPA Director come to that meeting as well, so that we can make the point clear. Now, it is very unlikely that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the state of New Hampshire individually, will be able to fund all of what is needed here. It is going to be imperative that the federal government funds some of that as well. And on that front presently, we are not encouraged, but we will continue to work together to make the case, because this river is a critical resource, it provides water to as many as 650,000 people, we know the recreational opportunities, we know the business opportunities that occur from tourists that are drawn to the area, and we see it right here at the mouth of the river with all of the benefits that we derive. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are pursuing this. There, I think, in terms of a legal perspective, you're right to get one. There are issues of standing, there are issues of proving damages. The Clean Water Act, interestingly enough, does allow individual citizen lawsuits, which is, it's one of the few federal laws that allow that, but it does. And so we've made a great amount of progress since the Clean Water Act was passed. In fact, the Merrimack River used to receive industrial discharge, and that's been effectively eliminated. Now the task before us is eliminating stormwater discharge, and, I would point this out, that the biggest problem that we're going to have to face is what do we do about non-point source discharge? That is discharge that's not coming from a pipe that we can identify and treat, but discharge that's coming from runoff and carrying various chemicals, various nutrients into the river. But you didn't come here for a lecture about the Merrimack River tonight. I have been impressed with the operations of the council, as I always am, and your other deliberations, and I won't distract from them any further, except to say that the legislative delegation is very eager to work with all of you relative to this issue, and we look forward to having you as partners in this effort, as we look forward to the day when there's a comprehensive solution and CSOs are no longer a reality in the Merrimack River.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you spending our earmark on State Street, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, that would lead us to General Government. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 190.
So moved.
Sorry, thanks for the second. So this is the amendment to our ordinance around when regular meetings were held, and this has been in committee since last December. As you recall, we took, I was just looking it up, I think we took two votes on changing our calendar to this three-week cadence. I think we did it in December of last year, and then I think we reconfirmed that again in January, and that's what we've been running with. The ordinance was submitted, and certainly he can speak to this, was submitted by Counsel Zied, and that was in the interest of aligning our, not our charter, but our code of ordinances in terms of scheduling under administration, city council, when regular meetings are held, and change the language from the second to last Monday to have it be every third Monday. And it's just been in committee because we, you know, kind of, we know we need to, there'll be a next year coming, and we would need to decide what we're going to do around our calendar. And I think the caveat for me has always been that the clause where it, and there's no suggestion of changing that, the regular meeting shall be held X, except when otherwise ordered by the city council, so I think that does, has given us the leeway to do what we're doing this year. So it, we made a, we voted to bring it out of committee with no recommendation. Obviously, there may be different points of view around the, every three weeks versus the every, the second to last Monday, and also procedurally, you know, I've also wondered if there's a way to just change the ordinance that just gives us leeway on a yearly basis or on a term basis to make, to make the adjustments that, you know, that particular council wants to make for itself. But again, we did bring it out of committee, three to zero, no recommendation. The thought was just to have a hash out on the floor, doesn't have to be settled tonight, but at least gets us thinking towards next year, and again, we will have a significantly different cast of characters next year, and so we probably don't want to schedule it for them. But anyway, those are my thoughts on that, and committee members can also jump in, but Counsel Zied?
Thank you. Yeah, I did submit this concurrently when we did the order, scheduling the schedule, and I echo the President's comments that ultimately it's, you know, the will of the council to schedule itself. That said, I do think it's helpful to have a baseline, and that's sort of how I view the ordinance, is like, this is the default, and then you obviously make adjustments where you feel like it's necessary, and that the U is the body acting. Obviously, by bringing this out tonight, we have to, we have to sort of assess how it's been going. We were eight months or so into this new schedule. I want to offer a couple perspectives on that, pros and cons, frankly. On the pro side, speaking first as a chair, it has been very helpful from that perspective. Budget has arguably always had the primo spot, the Thursday-after council, which allows the chair of budget, whomever it is, to have maximal time compared to other committees to turn around their work. And in the two-week cycle, you know, council would meet on Monday, immediately have to post, and of course, nothing is done alone with the clerk's help or the clerk's office, post on Tuesday morning to make sure you can hit your 48 for Thursday, have the meeting. I have to process minutes very quickly, or it just gets too far away from me, and then to be able to turn around and, in the intervening days, get it all cleaned up and packaged up to send off again to the clerk to meet the next deadline, which is to hit that packet. That's the two-week cycle. With the three-week cycle, there's been a little bit more breathing room for everybody, for me to invite people to attend, you know, that's on the front end. If I say, okay, just got referred to committee, you know, here's the deal, we might hear it next time, can you come and attend, et cetera, and then to be able to do that intervening work that needs to be done. Speaking as a counselor, certainly have not felt like I'm wanting for more meetings in, just in the, speaking in a very broad sense, I mean, despite the every three week, I mean, budget was very busy. Obviously, there are other meetings that are demanding of time, ward issues for those of us who are ward counselors having to do that aspect of the job. So I do think it's helped lighten the load a little bit, I wouldn't say it's been, you know, a panacea, and it solved every problem. So on that side, I think there are some pros. On the con side, I think, obviously, keeping an eye and watching towards emergency preambles as being, you know, maybe a way to measure ill effects, but having looked at what I did do, and I didn't, I didn't do as thorough an analysis I'd like, and I probably worked with the clerk on this, but the number of emergencies is running similar. It actually hasn't changed tremendously, and what I was, what I've been finding in my experience in my time is that whatever time is given, people are going to run up to the end of that clock. If it's a two-week clock, they'll run right up until the 4:00 PM of that Tuesday. If it's a three-week clock, they'll run right up. And I just think the council continuing to be hard on its deadlines helps us put out there into the, into the world that these are our schedules, it's all published ahead of time. One effort I made as chair was early on in the year, now we have a different finance director, was to just publish out the whole year and say, you really need to think about getting your things in on time in order to have them meet. So with all that said, on balance, nothing's perfect, but I do think it's worthy of codification now that it's before us tonight. I hope my colleagues will consider supporting, and I'll leave you with this thought. I think everybody in the room at some point has asked somebody if they're interested in running for city council, and I'd be willing to bet, my famous Dairy Queen, if anybody wants to take me up on it, that the number one answer is always time, and so it's always time. It's, I've never, you know, that's the number one thing I hear, and this is one way to try and balance that out and create a framework where people can serve, and have families, and have jobs, and do all the things they may want to do, and still be able to participate. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counsel Con?
Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, I wanted to make sure we got this out of committee. I think it warranted the conversation, it was sitting there for a while, so I was the one that motioned that we get it out for discussion right here and without a recommendation. I think it's no secret how I've kind of felt about this, but I'll be absolutely honest, I've definitely understood the reasons to try something different, and I think that's the nice thing, is that we are trying different things and not just sticking to maybe what has been the status quo prior, previously. However, for me, I haven't been completely finding it to be less work, so to speak, if that is kind of what maybe some of the desire was. I mean, it was helpful to hear a chair's opinion. I personally, I think what has been a struggle for me is the timing. You know, we say every third Monday unless there's an exception. A lot of our meetings have had to be moved to a Tuesday. We have also seen that there are, and I think I was very vocal, meetings were held during vacation week, and I remember once getting criticized when we had conversations or important matters come during vacation week. And I would really like to be thoughtful for a community that should be really accessible and available to all residents, that we be mindful of a couple of things like that. I also feel like the school committee's cadence, which is also set and not changing, is an important one to manage, which is why I think that was really the genesis of what we had here, was to alternate with another elected body. So for me, I won't be, I think what we did, and as Counsel President said, is we set our calendar for the year, so I'm not proposing we change the year, but I don't think we need to change the ordinance itself at this time. I would like to be able to continue seeing how the rest of the year is going. Me personally, and I didn't do this analysis, you know, we've had a lot of matters come in, a lot of transfers, I think it's the timing makes a difference. There will be some months when we're going to have to kind of make things meet at the end of the fiscal year, or as, after free cash. We're going to see ourselves really front-loaded heavy with a lot of these transfers or other matters. And I would say that's been somewhat, something I witnessed, a few meetings, depending on that timing, went longer than they should. But, so overall, I won't be supporting this amendment here. I would encourage we not change it, and we really wait till the rest of the year, given how we've set the calendar, and then let the next council coming in, when they set their calendar, to have the flexibility to see what was done last year versus what's in our ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, President. Yeah, so I do have to agree with the at-large counselor that just spoke, and, you know, out of my comments that, well, I can't speak to how a committee runs as chair, because I'm not a chair of any committee, but, you know, I think we've had a lot of marathon meetings. I think that in my, for where I sit, I sit on two committees, and I thought, you know, maybe one of the silver linings of this change would be that I wouldn't have back-to-back meetings on the Monday after every council meeting, but that has not been the case. So very little has changed for me, with the exception of, I've noticed there's been a lot more late files than ever before, and a lot more open meeting violations than ever before, it seems, this past year. I feel like we're at unprecedented numbers of open meeting law violations that have been launched against us for having, accepting so many late files, et cetera. I'm not sure how that changes. I think it's, I think there's something to the idea that if given a deadline, you, most people push to that deadline, whether it's two weeks or three weeks. So I appreciate the Ward One's Counselor's efforts, and agree that a lot of folks consider this job to be very time-consuming, and that being one of the reasons that they typically don't opt to engage or run for council. But what I would say to that is that, you know, that is kind of, that's a big part of the role, is the time commitment, and I just would challenge anyone coming into it to, that if you don't come on council understanding your commitment to what council does, I don't know what to say. I fully understood my time commitment when I came on, and I understood that as being, you know, meeting twice a month for council, and then subsequent council committee meetings. So I do feel that continuing the rest of the year as is is fine, and that it wouldn't make any sense to change anything, but with a new council coming on, and likely, I would hope, a subsequent early get-together of that council, I'm sorry, the word's escaping me, the thing we haven't done in two years, maybe that's why the word's escaping me, with the school committee, the retreat, that they would decide that at their early retreat in the new year and figure out what's going to work best. But I think codifying it by ordinance is maybe not the right move. There's some pros, there's some cons, but I don't think enough has been really studied, and I don't think enough of the, you know, I think there's more cons and pros.
I just want to make one point of information. The school committee did modify its calendar for next calendar year, they are starting to meet on Wednesdays, so I think it's every other Wednesday, but further discussion? Okay, so we'll do a roll call on ordinance 190. Okay, so we'll do a roll call on ordinance 190.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
No.
Counsel Gennis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
No.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
All right, so that has been changed, and again, the next council will work on its schedule. Next motion to receive and file collectively, communications 649 and 652.
Second.
Thank you. So the committee did vote three to zero to receive and file both of these communications. We did have quite a long discussion, and I want to talk about that a little bit, and other committee members can weigh in. This is related to communication 649 is the mayor's communication around the mayoral appointments to the special committee to review the ordinances of the city, so that those were five people. And just for those listening, that was Director Andrew Port, former city counselor Barry Connell, chief of staff Christian Seer, former mayor Donna Holliday, former mayor Mary Ann Clancy, and then the communication, 652 was the communication from me as council president, appointing the following persons to the special committee. And again, the council, council president, per section 95 of our charter, appoints four people, at least two of which need to be current counselors. So that was Counsel Con, Counsel Harmon, Counsel Zied, that's three, not two, and former counselor Jared Agarman, who's also a current member of the ZBA. So in committee, you know, we did talk about sort of having, excuse me, a slightly different mix here. We talked sort of a pro and con of having former mayors involved when, you know, there are other, other voices, perhaps folks that are on boards and commissions who've had a lot of experience within their, within their subject matter, within their, their realm, depending on what board or commission that they are on. And, you know, I think we, where we came out of this was, you know, a suggestion, you know, through the chief of staff for the mayor to relook at their, at their, at their appointees for this, and also for the council president to reevaluate. Counsel Con was willing to step aside, you know, and we talked about how this, this worked in the previous incarnation five years ago, five years ago. And the, you know, Counsel Con was willing to step aside to have somebody perhaps from the licensing commission or somebody from the energy advisory commission. We've mentioned a couple of names, and I will reach out to them. Counsel Con feeling like their licensing is a whole thing, energy advisory is certainly related. And, you know, the, between former counselors, former mayors, we have people that kind of know the breadth of the ordinances, but also to find ways for the committee, if not necessarily to add as formal members, because the charter says what the charter says, but to have people on in an advisory council and open it up to the public so that there could be broader participation. So that was, you know, again, the motion was to receive and file on both ends, and I will look into appointing somebody in Counsel Con's place, which again, was, was at her request. Counsel Harmon also, I believe, volunteered to step aside, but we're not going to let him off that easily. So that was sort of, that was sort of the gist, so yeah, if there's any, any thoughts from the councilist in terms of the council for, you know, the four people appointed by the president. Counsel Zied?
My only comment is, you know, the timeline is not expansive. I mean, you know, in, in the context of all other meetings you're supposed to do and to turn out a report by May 1/26, crossing over a city council line threshold, so I would just say, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, respectfully, it seems like the appointments have been made, so I don't, I don't know, like reconsider, the charter says, make appointments, the appointments have been made. I think we should, you know, try and convene and schedule like the six to eight meetings, I'm guessing. I don't know. I mean, Counsel Con actually probably is the most knowledgeable, which is so. Counsel Harmon and I are discussing, both would like Counsel Con to stay on. One of us will go, I'd be happy to go, but, but just to like.
She was, she was going to share the information from the previous, which, which she's chair. And Counsel Con, do you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I did do this, and I'm looking, there's actually a really good website. We were very detailed. We, we had no guidelines, and I feel like a lot of the groundwork has been laid, laid out in terms of the structure, division of chapters, the composition, and the only reason I suggested is, at the time, what was really helpful is having a couple of counselors balanced with members of the other commissions that actually used the ordinances that we created. But given, and I appreciate the statements that, you know, we, we can get started, can get some of the organizational items done, but then once after, and actually, yeah, I mean, all three of us are running, will might be here next year, so we, you know, no guarantee for some of us, but if we are here next year, then we could just still continue the work, you know, to get it done in May. So with that said, I was, I found it appealing that we could invite, you know, have guests. I think at the time, because we were during the pandemic, it was harder, we were meeting on Zoom, so we were really mindful of having maybe a breadth of people be voting members, but given the fact that we are not in that place, we could always invite the, the board and commissioners. So I am fine keeping it as it is, and we can definitely look at it in different ways on who we want to include based on the topic for that night, so.
Okay, thank you. So that being said, yes, certainly there's an urgency to kind of get it set and moving. I think the charter specified just getting the review process going. It didn't say the appointments had to be at a certain time, but obviously, the appointments, nothing happens until the appointments happen and a first meeting happens. So yeah, we will move it along, and I know that the administration's interested in that as well. Counsel Con, Counsel Zied?
Yeah, one more thing, and our first meeting actually was November 18th of 2020, which was the year of the review. So we did meet a little later and then accelerated, just to give you our timeline, what it was.
November 18th?
Yeah.
Counsel Zied?
Yeah, I was just sort of looking for the president, like who, who should we look to for the first meeting?
I think it'd be some, some, myself talking to Chief of Staff Seer to get that side tightened up, and then, and then that group would, the group would, and I know I asked this and I don't even remember the answer, the group would meet and then appoint a chair?
Yes, so last time, the mayor, Mayor Holliday, had run it, and it was actually kind of led as an effort from the administration initially. And then when we had our first organizational meeting, we selected a chair amongst the participants. And yeah, so actually, November 18th, so that first meeting was early November, and then November 18th was with the chair now, kind of convening.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so the motion collectively again was to receive and file both communications. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And yeah, we'll, we'll be meeting in our next general government with those two issues that we've talked about earlier, and that would lead us to licenses and permits.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to approve application 272.
Second.
So this is for SOC and from DINSMR. This is something that they've done for a number of years now. They have, in front of their storefront, they have two tents. They're set back off the street, they're actually, this section of the street has a lot of space for pedestrians, and so they've had this in place. There's been no complaints or any issues that have been raised by any, anybody in regard to this. So all the paperwork and insurance is in place, and we recommend it to approve three to zero out of committee.
Any further discussion? And there was a second on it, Counsel Con and then Counsel Donahue?
Yeah, thank you very much, and apologies, I did not attend the meeting on this, so I'm just going to ask questions based on, you know, we just had sidewalk sales during Iki Homecoming, and, and that area was very congested. I, I just had a question about the, they had, aside from the two tents, there was also kind of like a coat rack for things that were hanging during the sidewalk sale. Do you know if that's, I don't see it in this image, but was there any discussion of continuing? I don't know if that was just an exception for the sidewalk sales.
There's, there was no discussion about anything other than, than the tents that we approved.
Okay, so in the future, I think they still have the tents there, but maybe from enforcement perspective, there was coat racks with, with clothes hanging, but I just want to make sure the tent is, I do support the tents, I think they were fine with clearances, but when the, the kind of coat racks were there, it did get very congested. So it's good to know we're not, we didn't approve that. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Counsel Donahue, yes?
Yes, I also apologize for not making that meeting. I actually did get a concern about that particular setup in that they don't use the right kind of weights for the tent, is what I understood. Is that, did that come up at all? Like, they're not, they're more of a tripping hazard, the weights they use to weight down the tent poles, they're, they're more like a cinder block than like a round piece that would not be a tripping hazard. Did that come up at all?
No, no, we didn't discuss the type of weighting of the tents.
So yeah, that is a concern. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if I heard about it after the meeting took place or not, but I don't know if there's anything we can do about it at this point, but moving forward, when there's tents involved, I think it would be a good point of question to just ask how they're weighted and if the, if the weights are tripping hazards.
But just for, just on the diagram here, just for the record, it does state that all racks or tables with merchandise will be under tents and separated by eight feet, no food or alcohol. So they're very explicit on how they had, had asked for permission, and so if they didn't comply with that, that's a, that's a different issue.
With the racks, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, motion is made and seconded, so do a voice vote on this, I suppose. All those in favor of application 272, say aye. Aye.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Spoke out of turn there.
Okay, all those in favor, application 272, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Counsel Wright?
So motion to approve application 273.
Second.
Thank you. So this is, this is a motion that is sponsored by the Newburyport Chamber. It is the 13th Annual Classic Car Show. It's scheduled for August, Tuesday, August 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00. This is essentially the same as they've done in previous years. The only difference is they're, they're trying to get road closures a little earlier than normal, around 1:00 PM for the 4:00 PM start, and that's to accommodate the time they need to place all the vehicles in the, in the streets. There was conversation about how that would be managed and how the businesses in the area would be notified of the, of the early street closing, so they have time to leave if they choose or, or stay and enjoy the, the car show. The, as many of you know, the leadership of the chamber has, has, has transferred from Nate Allard to Nancy Caswell, and so Nancy, even though the application is signed by, by Nate in his capacity as the president, Nancy Caswell was the one to appear before the committee. And there are going to be four police details to assist with traffic flow, and there's a map to indicate the street closures and the side street closures. This was recommended out of committee for approval, but at three, three to zero.
Just, just a small point of information, on our, in our agenda, it does say August 4th, but it is August 21st.
It is August 21st.
21st.
Because that's already passed. It's not tonight.
It's tonight, I know.
It is now.
Addict.
Counsel Con?
Yes, quick clarification, I did see it says Harris Street Parking is closed during the event, or is that just a, an error?
No, they do, they do use that parking area. It's closed to the, they use that to stage vehicles.
They do use that to stage.
Oh, my gosh.
And that'll be appropriately signed to when it starts, so it's not all day, but it's, okay.
Any further discussion on the 13th Annual Classic Car Show on August 21st? Hearing none, roll call?
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Gennis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
All right, so that has been changed, and again, the next council will work on its schedule. Next motion to receive and file collectively, communications 649 and 652. Second.
Thank you. So the committee did vote three to zero to receive and file both of these communications. We did have quite a long discussion, and I want to talk about that a little bit, and other committee members can weigh in. This is related to communication 649 is the mayor's communication around the mayoral appointments to the special committee to review the ordinances of the city, so that those were five people. And just for those listening, that was Director Andrew Port, former city counselor Barry Connell, chief of staff Christian Seer, former mayor Donna Holliday, former mayor Mary Ann Clancy, and then the communication, 652 was the communication from me as council president, appointing the following persons to the special committee. And again, the council, council president, per section 95 of our charter, appoints four people, at least two of which need to be current counselors. So that was Counsel Con, Counsel Harmon, Counsel Zied, that's three, not two, and former counselor Jared Agarman, who's also a current member of the ZBA. So in committee, you know, we did talk about sort of having, excuse me, a slightly different mix here. We talked sort of a pro and con of having former mayors involved when, you know, there are other, other voices, perhaps folks that are on boards and commissions who've had a lot of experience within their, within their subject matter, within their, their realm, depending on what board or commission that they are on. And, you know, I think we, where we came out of this was, you know, a suggestion, you know, through the chief of staff for the mayor to relook at their, at their, at their appointees for this, and also for the council president to reevaluate. Counsel Con was willing to step aside, you know, and we talked about how this, this worked in the previous incarnation five years ago, five years ago. And the, you know, Counsel Con was willing to step aside to have somebody perhaps from the licensing commission or somebody from the energy advisory commission. We've mentioned a couple of names, and I will reach out to them. Counsel Con feeling like their licensing is a whole thing, energy advisory is certainly related. And, you know, the, between former counselors, former mayors, we have people that kind of know the breadth of the ordinances, but also to find ways for the committee, if not necessarily to add as formal members, because the charter says what the charter says, but to have people on in an advisory council and open it up to the public so that there could be broader participation. So that was, you know, again, the motion was to receive and file on both ends, and I will look into appointing somebody in Counsel Con's place, which again, was, was at her request. Counsel Harmon also, I believe, volunteered to step aside, but we're not going to let him off that easily. So that was sort of, that was sort of the gist, so yeah, if there's any, any, any thoughts from the councilist in terms of the council for, you know, the four people appointed by the president, Counsel Zied?
My only comment is, you know, the timeline is not expansive. I mean, you know, in, in the context of all other meetings you're supposed to do and to turn out a report by May 1/26, crossing over a city council line threshold, so I would just say, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, respectfully, it seems like the appointments have been made, so I don't, I don't know, like reconsider, the charter says, make appointments, the appointments have been made. I think we should, you know, try and convene and, and schedule like the six to eight meetings, I'm guessing. I don't know. I mean, Counsel Con actually probably is the most knowledgeable, which is so. Counsel Harmon and I are discussing, both would like Counsel Con to stay on. One of us will go, I'd be happy to go, but, but just to like.
She was, she was going to share the information from the previous, which, which she's chair.
So we didn't have too many more questions, other than possibilities of getting sidewalks through this rezoning plan. But other than that, we voted three to zero to approve this, and I will defer to the Ward Five Counselor as a sponsor to speak to it more.
If I may, thank you very much, Counselor President, and to the Chair, Planning and Development. I think the process was pretty well vetted. I think there's a lot of good questions. I do think safety is a paramount concern, especially with some of the other development that's gonna go on there. You know, we seem to be zoning and creating an area, an overlay area, bit by bit along the way here, and this just kind of fits into that along the way. And the ultimate piece to this is really, it gives the residents and the owners that live there now more flexibility as to what they're gonna do with their property going forward. So I appreciate the support from both the Planning Board and the committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Eadie?
Thank you. I'm likely to be the lone dissent on both this and ordinance 205, but done a lot of work with zoning over the years, including these two districts in the case of this one. And with due respect, I don't quite understand it. You know, oftentimes with zoning, you talk about similarity of parcels and, you know, you take a much bigger map and you look at it and you sort of figure out where a line is. And so I'm just not, I understand, you know, some people want to do a project from time to time, that's always a consideration. But this is, it just, it doesn't meet muster for me, so I'm not gonna be able to support it. I yield.
Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, roll call on 204 ordinance?
Counselors Eadie?
No.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. So, motion to approve ordinance 205 zoning amendment to rezone parcels of land on the south side of Low Street between Parcels 107 and 111, as amended.
Second.
So in committee, we decided to parcel off the part that is in the middle, not the corner piece, not the one closest to RYS, but the one that's attached to the Hope Church. We didn't think that we wanted to take the whole parcel of the Hope Church and make that R2. So in this case, we were just taking the frontage of Low Street and making, and sort of chopping off that one corner, so that the three parcels on Low Street would be R2. We had concerns about continuing to make residential into the industrial area, knowing what goes on next to Port Rehab and Colton Drive. We just didn't think it was appropriate to continue putting more residential, possibility of residential into the industrial area. So in this case, as amended, we voted three to zero. And I will defer to the Ward Three Counselor to speak to this as well, as a sponsor.
Thank you. I unfortunately was not able to attend any of the meetings, so I do defer to the Planning Director. If he'd be so kind to...
So, the Counsel, and thank you.
Sure. I don't know if there's anything further that Counsel Shan offered. I think, you know, there was a discussion about that particular corner not necessarily being as appropriate for industrial uses, dumping out into sort of residential neighborhoods. But as Counsel Shan pointed out, there was this concern about the proximity of some of the residential uses that might be there in the future. And so the two parcels that are larger in size and further down on Hill Street were taken out of the mix, so just the pieces on the frontage there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Counselors Eadie? Yeah, I just want to explain my dissent on this one. First of all, I mean, it's concerning to zone almost at a parcel level. That's sort of one of my heartburns. But second is, I just want to echo, I think you said R2 to I1, but I think you meant I1 to R2. Yeah, like, the concern is going from industrial to residential, and I'm very keen and in agreement with that concern, because, you know, we've had a lot of nips on the industrial from all the different sides of it, and I think actually that commercial has value to the city. So, you know, those are my, those are my concerns and the reason I will support. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I did speak and I did attend this meeting. I think my whole point, I will be supporting it, but in terms of really the review holistically, I think there was actually a response to a homeowner that wants to do something on their property, and they can't because of how they're zoned at I1. So I was just, before we get those requests, let's get ahead of really looking holistically at the city and think about how we want to redistrict. So that was only, my only kind of comment that I'm asking the Planning Office to consider, and not just be more reactionary to the specific requests. Thank you.
Counselor Donahue, and then Counselor Shan?
Thank you. Yeah, I will be supporting this. Historically, Low Street has been a bit of a mixed bag, and, you know, I think over the years, we've seen it really is leaning more and more residential along the way. And I don't really see Low Street as an extension of the industrial zone. I think it borders it, but I don't think that, you know, they're one in the same. And I prefer not to see the industrial properties on Low Street. I prefer they stay in, within the business park. And that Low Street be the residential street that it kind of is, with a lot of the homes further down. So I will be supporting this. It does make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shan?
Just to reiterate during the committee meeting, we did discuss at length what the overarching plan is for Low Street, and is there a holistic plan going forward? So hopefully that point was made, and we can go forward in the near term, discussing that on a bigger scale, sidewalks included.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, roll call on 205.
Counselors Eadie?
No.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Saving the best for last. Motion to approve, as amended, ordinance 198, the zoning ordinance for signage.
Second.
There's a lot to go on here. So, just to give folks an overview of why we did this, Counsel Harmon was good enough to sponsor this. This ordinance definitely clears up some of the things that didn't align with the current case law, and it does try to put some enforceability into some areas where we were having problems. I think some of the benefits of this is, our friends from Newburyport Track have been asking for two years to help them be able to create a sign that thanks all the folks that helped create Fuller Field, and they have not been allowed to. So that's one of the things. We thank Mr. LaRosa for being on this journey with us. So the three items that we really took up in committee were, well, two actually. One was signage downtown, banners specifically, and temporary signage. We did make the modification, and I believe it is correctly identified in the version we have on our table. We did go from 30 days to 180 days. The one, the 30 days did seem a bit short for the need for temporary signs. And at the request of the zoning administrator, she said, well, if you don't like 30, just go to 180. So that's what we did. And we changed it in both Section 8E, temporary signs, and it's also changed in the definition on page three. Another item that was hotly discussed, and I think we do need to make an amendment, because what we have on our desk isn't quite right. I think what we had actually in the packet is the correct one. It's on page five of the ordinance, and it's in Section M, the banner signage. I believe numerate four should be what was actually in the packet, and I'll defer to the actual sponsor here on that note. And one last thing before we go to that amendment. The other item that was fixed, it was in that same section, numerates K and L. We did have the City Department or Commission. I think that's, City Department of Commission should be both in K and L, and that is fixed on your amendment on your desk, so page five. So those are the big ones. We fixed the verbiage in K and L. The section on banner signage, Section Four, that should actually go back to probably what was in the original, and Counsel Harmon will speak to that. And then the other was the temporary signage going to 180. Other than that, I think this was a good process to get us started. The zoning administrator truly was just looking for something to get us in line with state, with the latest case law. And we tried to start small, not go big, and if we've made any mistakes, we can always fix it along the way. So I will defer to the sponsor to continue this conversation.
Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Thank you to the Chair, to my fellow committee member, and to the Planning Board and the Planning Office staff. I think we started this journey in April. So just to explain and zero in on page five, small m, banner signage, four. In the current version that you're looking at in hard copy, it exempts the ability to do a special event or grand opening sign within the downtown overlay district. That was the intent that came out of our last discussion on this in committee and public comment. It should not now have a 12-foot, 12-square-foot sized banner. It should be what you see prior to that at 32 square feet. So should we make an amendment to fix this? We can simply strike 12 square feet and unstrike 32 square feet. Alternatively, what is in the packet is sort of a hybrid, which would allow for, this is a new thing, that we would allow for grand opening or special event signs outside the downtown overlay district in the 32-square-foot, which is like a four-by-eight banner, it's a standard. But it would also allow within the downtown overlay district, so it does not, you know, disadvantage the downtown business community, a much smaller size at 12 square feet. So I will propose to amend, because it is sort of in most keeping with the most recent committee discussion, the paper version, to unstrike through 32 square feet and add a strike through to 12 square feet. But I'm open to the Council's wishes as it relates to the options on the table, and hopefully I didn't do a terrible job explaining them. This is...
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
So just point of information, so it's under, it's on page five. M, under M banner signage, it's subsection four.
Correct.
Unstrike the 32 square feet and strike the 12 square feet.
This choice, should we approve this and approve it overall, would say no banners downtown. The other choice is to look at the other language, so we can take this one first.
Right, so that was, is that friendly amendment, or?
Yes. Can I do that?
Your ordinance.
It seemed friendly to me. Counselor Khan, and Counselors Eadie?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. So, yeah, that was, I am in favor of, at this point, not allowing within the downtown overlay district. So I am in support of the paper version on that. I thought we had a really good conversation. I think the downtown overlay district also, as was mentioned, has some requirements as well anyways regarding what you can and cannot do. But in spite of that, I think this is a good way to start, and if there is any compelling reason to revisit, but I think with this and what we're trying to accomplish, it's better, at this point, to keep it a little bit more on the, I don't want to say conservative side, but like in a side of really trying to understand if you can envision downtown having multiple grand opening banners or signs, you know? So part of me is like, I would like to see it outside, I understand, but not in that. So I really do appreciate the paper version, and will support that.
Okay, Counselors Eadie, then Counselor Preston, and then Counselor Donahue.
Thanks. I'm just not focused yet, I guess, on the amendment. I'm still just kind of, just have a couple of questions more broadly. One is, and I don't know if the Chair, the sponsor, whomever is knowledgeable, but case law was referred to several times, so can somebody just give just like 60 seconds about what has changed about recent case laws? Recent case law have been more towards more permissive. I know signs get litigated all the time, usually between unions and businesses, and one wants it and the other one doesn't, and they fight about it. So I'd like to know if anybody could just tell me what the general trend is on that. The second one is, are there examples, did it come up, any practical examples of signs that would, that exist today, that we can point to, that would become non-conforming under this? Did that come up at all? You know, I read at the end of it, you can go and ask for a special permit for nonconformities if you have an existing sign and you need to do more than, I guess, baseline maintenance on it or that sort of thing. But are there actual examples of signs that, you know, in theory, if you were gonna enforce retro, would have to come down? I understand that that's not the case, but just trying to understand. And the last one is, just in general, I'm, you know, the ordinance specifically calls for the Planning Board to be the special permit granting authority, I believe. Or actually, it doesn't say who the specia is. It just says that, you know, just ask the special permit granting authority. I'm assuming that's the Planning Board, but I'm not sure. Maybe Andy could... But anyways, my question is, that is, section is specifically referring to if you have an existing sign, but if you want to put up a new sign and you want a nonconformity, I assume under just mass general law, you can ask for a variance effectively. I'm calling it a variance, but it could be a special permit. That part wasn't clear to me. So those are my three questions. Case law, examples, any practical things you can tell me about, and then the nonconformities existing and new.
Director Porter, if you want to handle those. And I'm trying to remember, then Counsel Preston, and then Counsel Donahue.
Sure, sorry. In terms of the case law, I mean, really what it gets down to is the sort of freedom of expression for non-commercial signs. If, you know, we're, generally speaking, the case law is saying, you shouldn't be reading the sign to determine its messaging. You can, you read the sign, so to speak, to determine whether it's a business sign, you know, if it's doing something, in sort of the nature of the sign, if you will. But if it's an expression sign, like a yard sign, for instance, election, you know, purposes, or a ballot question, or, you know, whatever kind of expression someone has, that is not something that, you know, the case law is suggesting that we're not allowed to sort of pick and choose, you know, between those types of signs. If we're distinguishing and saying, a certain type of sign is regulated in a certain way because it's a business sign, and it doesn't belong over here because there's no business at that location, that's something that's permissible, essentially. So it's, there's a little more scrutiny when we get into the area of trying to regulate and categorize the types of signs that are really more like an expression that individuals might have, if that helps. It's hard to sort of summarize all the case laws sort of very quickly, but that's in essence what happened there. We were basically trying to take out some language that was referring to things like, you know, political signage and whatnot in that way. The, as far as the nonconformances, yes, the applicant for a nonconforming sign, again, assuming it's grandfathered, it's actually pre-existing, nonconforming, they could go to the special permit granting authority. The reason why that term is used here is because most, in most cases, it's gonna be the zoning board of appeals, but in the downtown, the planning board, for instance, is a special permit granting authority, so they would be, for instance, in that location, they might be the special permit granting authority. So rather than having more legalese or verbiage to say Planning Board and/or ZBA, we just say special permit granting authority. And I believe there was a, there was another...
If you had a new sign, could you go to that same special permit granting authority and ask for...
In this case, if it's a new sign, if it's, if it's not, if it's one that doesn't comply, that would be a variance to the ZBA, yeah. Not go to the planning board in the downtown, that would be the ZBA because it's a variance.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah. Because the ZBA is the only board that's authorized to do variances.
All right, so just one last follow-up. So if, so I'm just hearing like, more permissive, essentially is what the case law is saying, on yard signs irrespective of what the message is, because it's a First Amendment issue. Keep it simple.
Correct, yeah.
So yard signs are defined in here as one of the signs, but then it's not mentioned anywhere else. So yard signs are actually treated the same as all these other things, right? That's... lesser treatment, it seems like elsewhere, or does it?
There is, well, again, you have to sort of cross-reference this scenario, and the temporary signs, there are some limitations on the size, you know, of those signs and where they can be placed. It's treated as a type of temporary sign, so to your two-point, I guess, yes, it is treated as, in similar criteria are applied to it in that way. But again, we're, we're not looking, we have more of ability to regulate and to be tighter on business signage, essentially, under the case law.
All right, that's fine, I can live with that. So the only question left is the middle one. So you mentioned the Fuller Field as a concrete example of one that couldn't have happened that you hope now can, but are there any other examples that, where there have been enforcement actions that have been unresolved by the zoning officer, for example?
Would you say unresolved? I mean, this is an instance where.
Well, I just need to understand the problem by pointing to me a sign that says, this is not what we would want, or this is what we would want. I don't.
One thing that I've noticed and we've seen is, like, for instance, the banners on Fuller Field are not necessarily of the current zoning, they're not necessarily characterized, you know, they're not captured. What the city may want to do or allow in certain instances isn't captured adequately. So for instance, here, where we're actually codifying and allowing, you know, those things more explicitly, the previous zoning really didn't speak to and address the allowance or the ability to do things like the banners along the, you know, the fence and whatnot, or in this case, the freestanding sign, you know, that as we're leaving, you know, a facility might say, you know, generously donated by, or funding provided by, you know, that sort of thing. That is not currently allowed in the zoning, so that's why there wasn't a path for someone to get on.
I mean, just to get sharper on it, the only two things I'm really familiar with was like the famous pizza years ago, there was an old sign there that became a six-month email thing, I remember, and I think they just got rid of it in the end. It was three roads, that was one. And the second one that was controversial was the Committee for an Open Waterfront hung a banner on the Route One Bridge on High Street, and that was also a six-month legal back and forth. Are both of those, you think, resolved?
Well, so things in the right-of-way, actually, it's a great question you asked, because we all remember here that there's also general ordinances, and so the preamble part of this chapter starts off by referencing some of the general code sections, just for clarity for the reader and realizing that this is really only dealing with the parcel property. So this is not, well, both public and private, but it's not dealing with the right-of-way. So a lot of the signs that, you know, we've seen Jim McCarthy come in here, a lot of the signs that we've been talking about are, that are of concern, and they're in the public realm, that people can see so much, are actually in the right-of-way. So the one there, for instance, if it's on the Route One Bridge, the Mass DoT's jurisdiction, having a conversation with them as well, but a lot of the signs, the banners and whatnot, might actually be for a continued conversation in this form here for you as counselors about what you want to allow on the right-of-way, what you may want to add or change or modify in some way. And I think our assumption here was that we would complete the zoning update process, but then focus on the right-of-way and the public properties, which are addressed by these other chapters that are shown on page two at the bottom. Those are the other general ordinance sections that deal with signage on public property or in the right-of-ways themselves.
Okay.
And those wouldn't be treated, that one, for instance, wouldn't be captured by zoning because it's in the right-of-way.
All right, I yield for now, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Preston.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to go back and focus on the amendment a little bit that we were discussing with M. Roman Marret four. So I was the one that struggled a little bit more with the version that's being proposed. And we discussed sort of these banner signs affectionately, discussing whether or not a special event could be also a Taco Tuesday, you know. So I think we all agree for, you know, for a no vote. Thank you. I was muted. So, you know, well, I can say that I certainly don't want to see the downtown overlay, well, the downtown core, you know, peppered with Taco Tuesday signs. However, I am sympathetic to the businesses in the downtown. I think they're all struggling a great deal as it is, and, you know, I think I want to be as supportive as I can so the downtown businesses can be successful. And I do agree that, you know, the two versions, neither of them quite reflect where we landed in our discussion, but I actually really love the online version, because it does allow for a smaller banner in the downtown overlay, whereas the proposed amendment does not allow for any banners in the downtown overlay. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that people keep that in mind as we think about this, you know. A new store opening in this scenario would not have the ability to put a banner out to advertise said grand opening. Having said that, one of the things that we also discussed was the fact that they could, of course, put a tent sign up front that says that they have a grand opening. That, of course, would require that they have the foresight to apply for an A-frame, and, you know, that they have had the foresight to, that that's going to take, you know, X amount of weeks to come into council, go through committee, come back out, get voted on by council. And I just, you know, I worry that some businesses wouldn't have the understanding that they would have to think about that, you know, potentially a couple of months in advance to be able to advertise the grand opening. So I, for one, would personally prefer the version that is in our packet, because it would give these businesses that opportunity, and I do, I want to be as supportive as I can of the downtown businesses. So I just wanted to make sure that that was heard.
Can I just raise a point of order?
Sure.
The amendment is to strike 12 and unstrike 32. So both allow signs, it's just a question of how big, correct?
No.
All right, Counselor Harmon, and we'll get back to Counselor Donahue.
So the version that we have in hard copy says outside the downtown overlay district, banner signs associated with initial grand opening, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, and then specifies a size, does not say that they're allowed anywhere within the downtown overlay.
So it's outside the downtown.
Correct. The version that's actually this, that got updated, that is cleaner to view online, allows for a smaller banner inside the downtown overlay, which is what I believe the at-large counselor was, likes better.
Okay, so we're still debating the motion, the amendment. Counselor Donahue?
Okay, thank you. So I think I have it straight. So the amendment is just to correct the language of the hard copy, is that?
To make it all 32, right?
Correct, so what I'm proposing.
No, I did that, just want to make sure it's correct.
Yes, correct. So what I've proposed is what I think is the truest spirit of where we left the committee discussion most recently, which is to not allow these downtown at all, but also to allow bigger banners outside of the downtown. So all I'm doing is changing the dimensions of this language in this motion.
Okay.
Should we choose to do that.
So yeah, so to that end, I do think anything outside of the downtown should be at least that 32-square-feet, I mean, a four-by-eight sign is not that big, and I think for a grand opening or special event outside the downtown, that's perfectly acceptable. I would also go as far as to say that if there was a way to distinguish within the downtown a grand opening versus a special event, I would be in favor of allowing even a four-by-eight sign for a grand opening of any business, because from a small business perspective, which is what your report is essentially made up of in lovely fabric of our downtown, small mom-and-pop shops, as we look to continue that theme and not have big box stores come in or chain stores come in, we want to support those small business efforts. And when you have a small business that comes in and they're trying to get attention to their grand opening, it just is a real shame if there's restrictions because we are, you know, we want to keep a certain aesthetic downtown year-round, but not allow for those one-off grand openings that don't happen every day. But I would not be in favor of it, just for special events, because like the at-large counselor mentioned, that could be really anything, any kind of weekly deal, or sale, or Taco Tuesday, or, you know, special clothing event, whatever. So that being said, I do support the amendment, and I would also like to see something allowable in the downtown for grand openings.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Khan.
Thank you. I just also want to clarify that the downtown overlay district under section 27F does have criteria for, under signs and awnings, so there is already something, I think what we're talking about within this section is related to, like, first, maybe let's clarify, what was there before? Was, there was no allowance of temporary signs, nothing allowed. And for the downtown overlay district, they're really dictated by signs and awnings, and it really says first-floor projected hanging window and wall signs shall be 12 square feet. So there is just that language for the downtown overlay district. I think the allowance of this 32-square-feet is a little bit kind of more for what we currently don't allow, and think of places like, you know, when you, why am I forgetting, like Port Plaza or other places where they could very well accommodate some type of a sign, but right now they can't. So that's why I was kind of saying, let's move along with this, it makes sense, we have already the, already criteria for the downtown overlay district, which I was saying we don't really need to touch right now, let's see how this is working, and if we do need to go back and modify, we can. And we have alternate, like the A-frames are available for people who really do want to do something. Granted, it's a long process, I recognize that, but there is still some acceptability within the downtown overlay district, and if, right, I'm looking at the planning director under signs and awnings.
I'm in that side.
Yes, yeah, so I just want to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you. Andy, Counselor Harmon.
Just trying to make sure I answer the questions. One thing that the Ward One counselor was asking, and I can't say that it was an enforcement complaint-driven thing, but there are changes around specifically wayfinding signage, which you could picture in the industrial park, or, but we have some downtown sort of alerting you to multiple locations in different directions. Banners, and under the new regulation of what a temporary sign as a banner would look like in a, for example, campaign or election, this makes the banner smaller in a residential, for example, location than what would currently be allowed. So those are just two more examples. I do think that, appreciate the at-large counselor's recent comments around the downtown having some allowance for signs. I do think, should we go in that direction, the 12-square-feet is likely the compromise that would be the only way that, you know, I don't know that I would support something that's as large as 32-square-feet downtown. And then just as one last point, the, we did have some discussion on sort of self-policing or, you know, in the downtown, your canvas is smaller because of the density and the size of storefronts, so I think it's almost helpful to sort of have a smaller size if that's something that we wanted to do there. And I think lastly, the, did I just say lastly? Lastly, lastly. Just to reiterate, that this is something that is newly allowable as a grand opening thing. We, you know, you may have seen them around, but they weren't technically allowed, so this is a net positive to the business community, it just depends where we want to draw that line. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Donahue. We got you. Okay, Counselor Zede.
Just two things. One is, I just wanted to point out that on page two, it specifically addresses conflict, so it says, you know, if the DOD or this special, both are more, are in conflict, those special regulations will be applied instead regardless of strictness. So you can't go bigger than 12 anyways, because Counselor Khan pointed out, the section's already done, unless you're going to go change that section, too. Totally different topic, because I just, my last thing is, on page seven, number six, this is curious to me, this wayfinding signage section. First of all, I really respectfully disagree that, you know, wayfinding signs can be placed at the reasonable discretion of the Office of Planning and Development. You know, we're very tight on the, on the, so interestingly, first of all, it's, you know, this isn't supposed to apply to the right-of-way, this ordinance in general, that was how it was, but this says, you know, they'll be located within or along public rights-of-way, so you kind of jumped the shark out of sort of the not public rights-of-way into it, and then, you know, I don't know if my colleagues agree, but, you know, presenting or giving some control or discretion over the right-of-way or along the right-of-way to the Office of Planning and Development without the city council, seems pretty antithetical to how we, how tight we try and keep the, I mean, we talk about A-frames, so, you know, wayfinding, which I know has been talked about ad nauseam. So I would make a motion to amend, I don't know, I mean, almost as severely as just striking number six, I'm not sure it even belongs here, if this isn't about the right-of-way.
What section is that?
This is page seven on the hard copy, number, just number six, just above.
Position of wayfinding signage.
Temporary signs, it's the last, it's all in bold, and it was "add." Says, "For the purpose of enhancing local community character, blah blah blah, the installation and maintenance of so-called wayfinding signs on appropriately located parcels may be authorized at the reasonable discretion of OPD." I won't read the rest.
Let me just raise as a point of order, and a question of order, so there's the motion about the 12-feet, the 32-feet, that has not been settled yet. Maybe we settle that first, and then Counselor.
I thought that was friendly, so I apologize.
Yeah, actually, we did say that was friendly, so, yeah, we're not talking about that, we're talking about the whole thing, all right, and so that way your amendment would be in order. So that was to strike number six, wayfinding signage, the whole thing.
Yeah, I just want to, before Andy speaks, with due respect to him, I just want to say, I've been on the council long enough that I've seen the wayfinding conversation reinvigorate every several years. Former counselor Vogel was very interested in that, but it was a huge project. I mean, they're talking about putting them in all the corners of like State and Pleasant and all these places. It's just a much bigger thing than a sign that says, like, there's more shops above here or something, it's a whole world.
Director Port, you want to?
If I could, I just briefly, and I realize this conversation, this piece of this didn't necessarily come up in committee as much, but this was a suggestion that I had made, just for, I have a placeholder essentially for something that we don't have in the ordinance, to clarify, this is not actually intended to authorize anything in the right-of-way or to alter that jurisdiction, really what this was intended to get to is, should the city at some point, this is your largely going to see something come through this council, this through this body here, an appropriation, you know, a grant acceptance, something like that might be happening through that mechanism, but the idea being that we don't have, just like with the banner signs and other things that we've talked about, we didn't have anything in this ordinance right now that accounted for the fact that sometimes the wayfinding sign, let's say you're in the business park and you're sort of identifying, you know, a general area down there, there, it might be actually more appropriate geographically, depending on the given location, to put it on the parcel property rather than in the right-of-way. So the idea here was just to have some sort of mechanism by which the city officials could have that happen, essentially. I leave the policy choices to you, of course. My suggestion here in trying to include something like this, and I appreciate the sponsor including it up to this point, was in essence to, and it didn't, I think, raise a concern for others up until this point, but the idea being that we would allow some mechanism by which we could do that on the parcel property, should it not be something that's in the right-of-way itself, essentially. So just trying to account for that here in some way.
Okay, Counselor Zede.
Well, I mean, then just fix the words. It says, "May reasonably be expected to be located within or along public rights-of-way." It says, "Within public rights-of-way," so just say, "Not within public rights-of-way," if that's your intent, unless I'm misreading it. It says, "While a majority of signage may reasonably be expected to be located within or along the public rights-of-way," doesn't that say most of it will be in the right-of-way?
I think that's phrase such as such to indicate that that's why we might all expect it to be there, that the sentence and the provision then goes on to say that this piece is actually authorizing it only for the parcel property, that's the way I read that.
The allowance herein.
It's not granting the allowance within the right-of-way, it's just noting the fact that the starting premise might, for all of us, be the presumption that wayfinding signage might be within the right-of-way, just to clarify. It's not intended to grant any authority within the right-of-way for approvals of it here.
All right, so just my last question, I'll stop. But so you would go to a private property owner and say, "The city would like to place this thing on your property."
Well, quite frankly.
"We'll take care of it and we'll pay for it."
Yeah, quite.
On your property.
Quite frankly, for, I think, the reasons you're illustrating, we're probably going to be back here, for wayfinding signage, we're probably going to be back here having a discussion about it in some way, shape, or form, for the obvious reasons, whether it be appropriation of funds, or where it's going and so forth, but the point I was trying to make here by having at least a provision for it was, there's a mechanism by which the zoning administrator can see that that signage is compliant with zoning, without us having to come back here to amend this ordinance. We might still be here talking about, do you want to place that signage, is it being provided by, you know, grant by, you know, or funding by someone versus the city itself, but I wanted to make sure at least we had a provision to deal with that, given that in the past, it's been discussed so many times, having wayfinding signage, and whether that involves the downtown or some other area of the city. I just wanted to make sure again that while we're tinkering with ordinances, and it does take a long time to update ordinances sometimes, that we have a provision that deals with the allowance for that, given that we developed the whole wayfinding plan, and we've had discussions about it so many times over the years, that's all.
And I would amend my motion to avoid further debate and just say, you know, at the discretion of the city council, and then I think you have your framework, and you can come in and ask for it, and instead of just trying to.
For a second on that?
Force a debate about.
Can I accept that as friendly?
You can.
Great.
All right, I yield, thank you.
Okay, so that changes, yeah, page seven, number six, insert "council" instead of "Office of Planning and Development." And Clerk Sullivan, were you trying to signal me earlier?
I just wanted to make sure we had a second on it.
Okay.
Counselor Preston, I think, was the second on that.
So we're, we still got the whole motion, the whole thing before us. Counselor Preston.
Yeah, I mean, I also lost sight of the fact that the previous amendment was friendly, so therefore I am going to make the attempt at the amendment two, or are we again, seven? Yes, no, eight, D., M., four, going back to the banners. Sorry, now I lost in my thing. Okay, let's say on page five, under M. Roman Marret four. So I will make the motion to amend, so that it actually reads the way that it is on our online version, so not the paper version, just to make it simplest for all of us, so that this would then, for the benefit of Counselor Donahue, this would be where we would be allowing 32-square-foot signs outside of the downtown and 12-foot, square, 12-square-foot signs within the downtown.
Second.
Okay.
Interesting.
Counselor, right.
So, not often someone to say that I'm totally confused about something, that I'm totally confused about something. If we go with your language, you're creating a conflict, because you're talking about the downtown overlay district specifically, whereas the downtown overlay district, conditions in the downtown overlay district now would supersede anything that you put into here, because you've already said earlier in this document that the existing zoning in the downtown overlay district, if there's a conflict, we go back to the downtown overlay district. So it doesn't make sense to me to single out the downtown overlay district, when we've already said previously in this ordinance that any conflict is going to go back towards the downtown overlay district.
Okay, Counselor Preston.
Can I ask, sorry, Director Port to sort of comment on that?
Yeah, the way I read that this one would plan, again, we don't have our zoning administrator, but I think that essentially what, the way this would work is, this is actually a newer provision, and it's actually allowing a new allowance that wasn't there before, which is clarifying and explicitly saying you can have a temporary type of signage. I think this is layered on top of the downtown overlay district, while the size constraints and so forth, to Counselor Khan's really point, are. and so forth, to Counselor Khan's really point, are what prevails here. I think this allowance here for a banner sign, if you were to include it here, an allowance in the downtown, would be read as allowing that on top of the downtown overlay district, because it's a more recent vote that you've taken, essentially, so.
I'm not confused, but Counselor Wright still looks confused.
Yeah.
Is there, was the motion made and seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I appreciate the explanation, but the words don't say that. And the words say that ultimately, that the existing zoning, regardless of what we pass, whenever we pass it, will prevail. So we, I agree with the at-large counsel, we've created a conflict here, and we've created a loophole that someone would read through that says, well, you passed this earlier, but it says the original actually prevails. So I'd like us to get the language correct, so that we don't have that isolated conflict in the downtown overlay. That's all. And I'm not sure what it is.
All right. Further discussion? Counselor Shand?
Just quickly, I think, I've said it before, I think I'd like starting small. I think right now, if we stick with what's in the downtown overlay and not include options here, I would think that's the right way to start. And then if we need to expand, we can do that based off of input from the folks downtown. Downtown is special, and I think adding more to it, I don't think we need it right now. And I would rather stick with keeping it small to start with, and then we can always expand. That's what, rules of zoning, you can't, you can't put the genie back in the bottle, so. I wouldn't support this.
Okay. Counselor Preston, and then Counselor Donahue.
Yeah, so, I certainly understand, but, you know, we can always change an ordinance. So yes, in this particular instance, you can put the genie back in the bottle. But much of the way that we are amending this ordinance here, we could always amend it again if proven that this really did become onerous and we end up with a downtown full of Taco Tuesdays, right? So, but to my earlier amendment, and I would love for the Planning and Development Director to help me understand if I am about to propose something that would not be a good idea. But so to my previous amendment, I would accompany an amendment two, where did it go? On page two, under additional standards and applications to signs within the downtown overlay district, I would, so let me just read it so that we can all understand. Additional standard applica, applicable, no, sorry, additional standards applicable to signs within the downtown overlay district and Newburyport Smart Growth District are codified in ordinance sections, blah, 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 and blah, 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 respectively. To the extent any of those special regulations are in conflict with this section, it currently reads, "Those special regulations shall be applied instead." Bless you. I would, the proposed amendment, and this is where I want to make sure I'm not trampling on too many things, would, that last bit would change to, "These regulations shall be applied instead." That would make this supersede the downtown overlay.
I would err on the side of where Counselor Shand was on this, in terms of the, without having to, you know, read through each provision in the ordinance here, I think there are some greater latitudes here that you might be allowing, that would affect the downtown and to that opening the can of worms sort of discussion, if you will. And I'm not, I understand completely all the points that have been made here, but because we're not only touching that one piece about the temporary banners, you know, for events, you know, grand openings or events or whatnot, we might be pulling in some other things here that would allow us to say greater-sized signs and so forth, that's, I would start on the side of the more cautionary approach to it, if you will.
Okay. Counselor Wright. I'm sorry, Counselor Donahue.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
And then Counselor Wright.
It's okay, thank you. I know, it's going to go round and round. Yeah, so, I mean, I know I initially am very much in favor of the businesses downtown being able to advertise their grand openings in some manner, not in favor of the Taco Tuesday special event-type advertising in the downtown. That being said, it does seem like this particular effort is not maybe the right avenue for that, and that maybe we just address the DOD separately at a different time and sort of maybe, I frankly think the DOD needs to be addressed holistically anyway, as a whole. So maybe we just kind of leave this as it is tonight, and approach what's allowed in the DOD in a second effort. So you'll get that.
Counselor Wright?
Thank you. So just to, just so it's clear in my mind, the policy decision with your amendment is to allow banners in downtown, in the downtown overlay district?
Twelve, four square.
Small, small banners.
Small banners in the downtown.
Okay.
For 60 days.
30, oh, 30.
30 before, 30 after.
All right. So amendment on the floor, any further discussion? Everyone clear on the amendment?
Let's take the vote anyways.
All right. Roll call on that.
Counselor Zied.
No.
Counselor Donahue.
No.
Counselor Granis.
No.
Counselor Harmon.
No.
Counselor Khan.
No.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Preston.
I'm a no, too.
Counselor Shand.
I was going to go on, but you guys have played time.
Counselor Shand, no. Counselor Wright.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
I was going to give you a supportive yes, but I'm a no now.
Get the motion to go past 10:30.
Okay. So where we're at is the whole, the whole thing, we're back to that. Further discussion, amendments, Counselor McCauley?
Just a question, are we back to the friendly amendment?
Friendly as well, the change to wayfinding.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, friendly on the wayfinding and friendly on the 32 and 12.
Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, all right. So ordinance is motion to approve, is the underlying motion on the floor. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Granis. Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
That is it, coming out of PND. We will not be meeting next Tuesday, because I'm pretty sure I won't be able to get a quorum, but we will have to meet before our next meeting. So we will connect on when that date is, so we can do the FEMA piece. So that's it for PND. Thank you.
So this, would somebody want to?
Motion to go beyond 10:30.
Second. Invoke Rule 2B. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, so we're going past 10:30. That will lead us to Public Works and Safety.
Thank you, Chair. Motion to approve, but it's really receiving file, communication 654, introduction of the new health director.
Second.
On his first day of work, he attended the PWS meeting at the end of his night. One of the first things, he talked about what is his learning curve on day one going forward. He was present to discuss, selected, he was selected and nominated by the Board of Health, thorough interview process going forward. He gave us an overview of his background, as you would expect, and then spoke about the steep learning curve of not having access and email and things like that. We spoke about yanking homecoming at the time, it was fast approaching. He felt confident that they had enough resources to be able to do that. In speaking with some of the downtown vendors, they were happy, so mission accomplished going forward. We spoke about the aspects of the job, reporting in Maven, beach health, public safety, and he reemphasized his experience in epidemiology, following the science going forward. So we talked about his goals, Maven reporting and getting that accurate. He doesn't, he wasn't too sure if we were prepared for another health emergency going forward, because it's too soon to be on there. But he did talk to, he was aware of the CSOs, he wasn't up to speed as to what his role was going to be on that, but both sustainability and the harbor master were helping him going on. It was noted that some, he was talking about, potentially talking about updating some of the health ordinances, you know, in the process going forward, and Counselor Khan was nice enough to suggest the process he could go through. Regardless, the committee voted three to zero to receive and file the nomination, but also approved his nomination as well.
Further discussion? Motion was to receive and file. So it's communication, we'll just do a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Motion to receive and file, communication 544. This is an email from Mario O'Donnell on flooding on Mark One Lane. We felt that this item was in here simply as a reminder for us to keep it top of mind. The project was funded on 7/14 by the council, the item can be retired. It was three to zero to recommend a receiving file.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion to receive and file, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Motion to approve appointment 581.
Okay.
Thank you. This is for Roger Jones, says a reappearance to the Water and Sewer Commission. It was seconded by Counselor Granis. Roger was in person, he talked about his long history in various city roles, you'll see in his bio, he goes back to 1975, when he was donating his time and effort along the way, a number of roles going forward. Specifically about water and sewer, he's been on this commission since 2011, he voted, he was voted to be reappointed as chair this past spring. Did voice concern about the projects in the pipeline with such large costs. The goal, his goal was to keep rates down. It was kind of a conundrum, how do you keep rates low and you pay for big projects? His first answer was, "The council and the Water Sewer Commission needs to work more closely together." And then we talked about how some project, some debt was going to be repaid in a number of years, and the timing could have been just right along the way, which in one way explains some of the delay in the projects that are going forward. He was asked if he felt that this year, the Water and Sewer Commission got a lot of visibility where they never had it before. He readily agreed. He felt that they had some qualified people, not always of the same mind on the commission, but they tried to go about earnestly trying to make decisions. He felt there was lots of pressure by the administration to make this decision on the infamous privilege deal. He felt as chair, he tried to get the info all out in one meeting to help evaluate the decision, and again, it was in one meeting going forward. He was asked if we, about rates, if we compared them to other towns, the answer is yes, in general, and potentially what the impact would be on this four-tier system going forward, and that would be to alleviate some of the folks at the bottom end and put more pressure on the folks at the top going forward. Again, the questions came back to the privilege fee giveaway. It didn't quite feel right with some of the committee members, especially since we have such large projects going forward, and this was direct ratepayer money that would have gone into retained earnings. And one question, the question was, you know, why did we waive the 1.4, 1.1 million in ratepayer money that would have gone to retained earnings? And the answer was pretty straightforward. He told us that, what he was told, that the deal wouldn't go through unless they offered the abatement, so that's what they did. The council, the committee, after more public comment, voted one to two with a negative approval.
Okay. Discussion? Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. Firstly, I want to really commend Mr. Jones and say how grateful I am for his service to the city. He really has been an exemplary resident for many, many years. However, I did speak in committee against approval of Mr. Jones. Frankly, you know, I think it is, we really need members of the Water Sewer Commission, especially, most critically now, as we move into, you know, the upcoming water and sewer projects that are going to be an enormous toll on the city from a cost perspective. I think, you know, we really need members of the Water Sewer Commission that are really going to be thoughtful and really take the time for deliberation on the critical projects that are facing the city. And, you know, I do feel that several members of the Water Sewer Commission have not shown significant pushback, most notably, as it was mentioned, both the Port Plaza project abatement, as well as the acceptance of the PAR report. Both of those projects were pushed through the Water Sewer Commission by the administration in a single meeting. These are both enormous decisions, and in both instances, the Water Sewer Commission pushed those through in a single meeting. And it was very evident from both of those meetings that they did not have that information in front of them before the meeting. So they were handed information in the meeting and told to make very significant decisions in that meeting, and there was not pushback. Well, there certainly was concern expressed by some members in those meetings about the fact that, you know, they were being pushed for these decisions. They did acquiesce, and they did allow for both of these major decisions to happen without taking real time to be very deliberative and very thoughtful about those decisions. And therefore, I really feel that, you know, Mr. Jones, being one of those people who really, and particularly as the chair, someone who did not direct the members and the commission as a whole to really take more time to be thoughtful about it, I really feel that it really is time for us to look for new water and sewer commissioners that are going to take more significant time and really be more deliberative in their process, especially as we move forward with the very critical process, our projects coming forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, yes. I'd like to also echo the appreciation that I'm sure we all share for all the many years of service Mr. Jones has had to the city. But I also want to echo the at-large comments in that she pretty much nailed all the thoughts that I had at that meeting, and is pretty much why I voted the way I did. It was very disconcerting to get some of the answers that we got surrounding that abatement, and, you know, that there was no, there didn't seem to be much remorse or consideration that maybe it wasn't the right decision, or that it wasn't the best decision. That left sort of that taste in my mouth that just felt like, we really need fresh blood on that commission. There's so many projects coming forward that really are going to need a lot of critical thinking and more than one meeting's decision. We need to really rethink these appointments to the Water Sewer Commission as they come in, as we face literally multi-millions and millions of dollars worth of projects that are facing them, so, thank you.
Counselor Khan and Counselor Zied.
Yeah, thank you. I am going to rise in support of Mr. Jones. I mean, we, we're talking about one instance, but in his years of service, there are many instances, we've had him before us, water sewer rate discussion and other things. I remember when we were initially talking about the tie and bond report, and probably talking about like four or five years ago. And there is a breadth of knowledge, expertise. I do think that was a very, I watched that meeting that happened, and I recognize and see the frustration from some of the counselors here. But in particular, though, Mr. Jones, though, given his experience, his expertise, just in this situation, I do recognize it was unique, but I do think he used his voice. And there was a, they were asked to waive the whole amount, and they did not do that. There was some discussion, a little bit of, kind of, I wouldn't say pushback, but trying to understand the situation. So I guess all I would say is, I will be supporting Mr. Jones, specifically just because what I've seen outside of that situation. I don't disregard that. I don't disregard the numerous meetings he's been here over the last few years, my eight years, and I can't let this one instance just mar what I've seen from him through the many other years I've seen him in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zied?
Thank you. I'm very conflicted about this and the next appointment as well. First thing is, I don't know how, what else can counselors do? You know, how do you get heard? And this was one where everybody watched the slow-moving train wreck sort of come through town, and despite numerous, I would say, outreaches and efforts, including several people attending the meeting and trying to slow things down and get a conversation going, essentially it was all for nothing. I mean, really, at the end of the day, the process continued very swiftly, as you heard. I can appreciate, you know, okay, well, we didn't waive all of it, is maybe a mitigating factor, but it's frustrating, and in the ensuing months, we've just spent lots of money months, we've just spent lots of money on attorneys to tell us, you know, how to not work together and how to not listen to each other. But I do think there's a real problem with the city council not being heard, not just with this board and commission, but with many. I'm personally very frustrated that, on the one hand, I have to attend dozens of meetings where I'm told we're basically facing an insurmountable number of projects in the water sewer realm, and that people can't get a second meter to not have to pay for a service they're using, which is when you water your lawn, you pay for sewer anyways. You just can't have that. And one of the reasons cited was the need for more revenue. And then we come here and we say, well, we need more rates because we need to support. And then, on the other hand, essentially saying, okay, we have the capacity to waive a fee that was set years ago and has been paid by many others. And what's most frustrating to me is the Water Sewer Commission is not a land use board. It's not their job to make deals go through. That isn't why we have a Water Sewer Commission. There are many checks and balances in the system. And to go to them and say, you're going to blow up this opportunity for housing is, first of all, it's unfair to them, but it's also unfair to the city and unfair to the taxpayers. And they were put in a bad spot. But that is sometimes the nature of the beast. And there has to be somebody there who says, you know what, first of all, you're asking us something that's out of our scope. Land use is your problem, not our problem. And lastly, I think the amount that was waived, you know, as a, if you're negotiating, it sounds great. We split the difference. But there's no actual basis for that number. There's no such thing as just, hey, just pay what's left on the bill, on the debt, and we'll call it a day. What about all the interest that's been paid? What about all the people who paid into that betterment from before? What about the residents on Plum Island who were sacked into paying a betterment for 20 years with no relief? Should we just go to them and say, well, just, if there's one big project, we'll see if we can get them to pay what's left and then we'll call it a day? That's not how betterments work. You set them. They have a life. They have an amount. You have to have a basis if you're really going to make a change. And it all got summarily rolled up and canned, in my opinion, in an inappropriate way and on an inappropriate timeline. So I'm frustrated, don't feel heard. Many counselors have put more effort into trying to communicate this before, during, and after to the Water Sewer Commission, and none of it seemed to make any difference. When else do you speak?
Further discussion?
Mr. President, may I speak? I've been here for four hours.
Your name is?
I am Paul Swazoo. I am the commissioner and former commissioner of the water.
I thought you might be Paul. Yeah, it's not going to be a debate with people in the audience, Paul. And your appointment will be coming up shortly. You could make a statement at the beginning of that if you want for a minute. That would, that would...
May I?
How about at the beginning of your appointment?
May I?
Yeah, I appreciate you staying here. All right. Any further discussion on the appointment of Roger Jones? Hearing none. Roll call?
Counsel Zied?
Present.
Counsel Donahue?
No.
Counsel Greenwich?
No.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
No.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Present.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
So we've got five yes, three no, two present, and one absent.
So five yes, three no, two present, one absent. All right, so that passes. All right. And so Counsel McCauley, want to make the next motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Swazoo, I'll allow you a minute. And yeah, you could have spoken a public comment earlier.
Motion approved, appointment 577. Paul Swazoo as a reappointment to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
Point of order?
Sure.
What were the results of the vote?
I'm sorry. Five, three, five yes, three no, two present, one absent. Motion fails.
Fails.
Fails. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Mr. Swazoo, yeah, if you want to speak for a minute, that'd be great.
Good evening. I come here tonight, I want to present myself in the flesh. I say to you first that I've been a water commissioner since 2022. I've attended every meeting with the exception of a meeting that was rescheduled. I have three kids in school. I'm the only one on the board that has that constraint. I've worked with many people. I've learned a lot. And about the Kmart issue, we've got conflicting legal advice about that. And we were pulled in many directions. I'm pleased that Mr. Jones has been reappointed to the...
He has not been. He got five votes and there were three no, but he needed six to pass.
I, myself and Commissioner Simon are the only ones to have visited the two facilities, the water treatment plant and the source of water. And going there, I saw Mr. Jones being there, his name on a plaque, and back in the 1990s when I was riding the subway to college. So he was quite a man to work with. The other thing I want to mention about the capital improvement projects, we've been deliberating that for some time. We get much information and we're being pulled in many directions. In closing, I'll say, I serve, I volunteer, and the only thing I have gotten is some angry messages from students who aren't happy with their grades, who got my cell phone number from the official record on my resume. And it's a great city to live in and it's been a privilege to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for being here. Any discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I just, Paul was nominated. He's been here since 2022. One of the focuses he has is on the redundancy of the system, pump station, avoid flooding. We talked about PFAS. We'll definitely need federal funds for that. He did mention that DPS director was pushing water and sewer forwards and pushing them towards the decision. There were, again, questions about the privilege fee. You know, what lessons were learned in that discussion? The answer was none because he trusted the mayor's presentation and was happy with the fellow commissioners' compromise that was offered out. He did have positive thoughts on the four-rate tier system in that it would help those users. It would, in a way, punish hot users going forward. But again, we're in search of revenue going forward. And so, you know, there was a question that says, who does the Water and Sewer Commission represent? The first answer was the city. The second answer was the ratepayers going forward. And so, again, the committee deliberated further on this and voted one to two again, and a negative recommendation.
Okay. So discussion on the reappointment of Mr. Swazoo? Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, President. So I just, you know, want to rise and just iterate that as one of the two people that voted against this appointment, while there are many good merits that were mentioned, it is very difficult to get past what happened. And when asked if there was a learning curve and if the decision was good and the answer was no learning curve and the decision was good, that was it for me. Because that, to me, says that you did not learn any kind of lesson about listening to counsel who appoints you and understanding that you just can't bend under pressure in one meeting because the administration is pushing you. I can appreciate that in the discussion, it was mentioned by the appointment that, you know, the effort was for affordable housing, for more housing to come through. And that, you know, we're making a lot of talk about getting more housing. And this was something that, you know, who wouldn't support more housing in this climate of trying to get more housing? However, as is previously stated by the board one counselor, we did not appoint a water sewer commission to play land use commission. That was not their role. It was not fair that it was asked of them. And the betterment fees, I think, not understood. And it was used as a piece in the chess game by administration. And that's very unfortunate, but they have to, you know, make their beds and lionets. So unfortunately, I've been in the same position. I've been on a volunteer commission for upwards of 10 years, and I've had to make some hard decisions. And sometimes you have to do that. So I don't know what else to say other than I just can't support any of the water sewer commissioners who really didn't learn anything from that experience.
All right. Further discussion? Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I do want to thank Mr. Swazoo for his volunteerism. I think it is really important. And I'm sure it does not feel like we appreciate it, but I truly do appreciate it. Having said that, in the interest of time, I will not repeat everything I said previously, but it would apply for me in this instance as well. I will particularly say, you know, that the point about, you know, was there a learning curve after the abatement for the Kmart project, the Port Plaza project, excuse me, and the response being no was particularly hard to take because you may remember that we did have a resolution in particular from this body to the Water Sewer Commission in relation to that particular project and the particular abatement that was offered there. And so, to recognize that post that decision, that the council passed a resolution against it, and to say that there was no learning curve still, really, I just really struggle with that. And so I will not be supporting this appointment either. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Counsel Zied?
Yeah, just, you know, it's awful to be put in really terrible spots. And I think this is where we are. I really am sympathetic with getting pulled in every direction. It just doesn't feel like the city council is one of those directions. And I don't know how, that's an endemic problem. How do you solve that problem? I mean, the reason appointments come to the council is to impute into the process that you represent, sort of you have to think about everybody. You can't just think about the mayor. And I think this is part of a much bigger conversation, a Newburyport and our structure. But I want to make a friendly suggestion to the motioner. I think that the motion should be withdrawn and I think this should be received and filed. And I think the prior vote could be reconsidered and should be motioned to receive and file. I think it's a better way to proceed, my two cents. I'm not the motioner or the seconder, but it's my recommendation.
Okay. So still have the motion on the floor? Further discussion?
I will make a motion to withdraw the nomination. But I'm not, I'm not the one who submitted it, right? I'm just the one who brought it forward. So the administration would have to withdraw that, right?
Yeah, I understand. We can vote. Sorry.
So I'll just say, after the last, I gave the administration the option to withdraw.
All right. If you did, then I, I forget it. I yield. If the opportunity was offered, then that was my goal.
Okay. All right. So further discussion on the motion to approve the appointment? Hearing none. Roll call?
Counsel Zied?
Present.
Counsel Donahue?
No.
Counsel Greenwich?
Present.
Counsel Harmon?
Present.
Counsel Khan?
Present.
Counsel Lane?
Not here.
Counsel McCauley?
Present.
Counsel Preston?
Present.
Counsel Shan?
Present.
Counsel Wright?
Present.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. So reappointment fails. Paul, thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm...
You were not reappointed? Okay. I'm sorry for the legalese and... Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Good night. Counsel McCauley?
Right to bunch up my approvals, appointment 571, 573, 574, 575, 576.
Second.
Thank you. These were all reappointments and one appointment to the Assistant Harbor Master Shellfish Constable scenario. We, as you can see from their CVs that were submitted in the packet, they're all highly qualified people. We asked them pretty straightforward, why did they want to do this? And one of the improvements they wanted to see. For appointment 571, Javon Kowalski, he spoke about his past, the experience. He's been here eight years, likes working on the river, helping people, sees really good progress under the harbor master and the new progress that's going on. Michael Talbert, appointment 573, he has an appointment, not a reappointment. He was previously over in Salisbury. He always wanted to come to Newburyport because of the focus on training and emphasis on safety that goes on. He's dedicated himself to upholding the laws on the river. And this type of work, he feels, makes him a better person. In appointment 574, Brian Cutler, he mentioned that this was his fifth year. He feels is a great team to work with. The marmak is tough and he likes working with people. He leverages experience to keep people safe going forward. Appointment 575, Logan Ness, retired from the Coast Guard a year ago, previously stationed on the marmak, so he's very familiar with the river. He has a new focus as a special police officer now in minimizing the risks that he sees on the river going forward. And Gary Palatnik, he joined us in person. He's been working there for 35 years. He shared some great insights as to how the traffic and the river has changed exponentially. And he sees great things under the leadership of the current harbor master and the direction they're taking. All five of these, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, were three to zero, recommended to approve.
Okay. Any further discussion? So this is collectively on appointment 571 through 576?
Yes, 71, 73, 74, 75, and 76.
Roll call?
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Greenwich?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to approve order 738. This is the ad hoc water infrastructure prioritization. It was amended in committee. You have the amended version in your packet going forward. Counsel Khan gave us an overview. He said it was intended to create transparency and help with the prioritization, to create a timeline that is simpler for both the council, the public, and the administration all get behind. The proposal started with three counselors, grew to five, consistent with other ad hocks, discussions about the makeup, including members of the public. We did get to the point that members of the public are invited here, and it was pushed upon us to make sure that the public can speak and have public comment at each and every time. The prioritization in general has not, the prioritization of these products, projects, has really not included the council up to a mile. They've been done off to the side, and then we get brought in at certain points, maybe 80% or something, or they go along. It feels the council should be more engaged through these projects, working better with the Water and Sewer Commission as well. We confirm that the role is really advisory to the council and to the administration centered around administrations. There were questions about, is this ad hoc through the end of the year or for six months? And the answer is through the end of the year going forward, which should be, you know, as quickly as we can make it. What will happen to these recommendations? And we hope that the recommendations are collaborative, that the administration and council will take them up, debate them, and then ultimately fund them going forward. There were some edits and amendments put in through public comment. John McWhite, our city engineer, had offered up some edits, which you see in front of you going forward, to make it a little bit more broader and inclusive and maybe more aligned with some of the resiliency work that our committee's doing out there as well. The committee voted three to zero to approve recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Zied?
I just want to back up to the timeline. So the way I read it, it says, you know, it must meet within 30 days. So if it passed tonight, it would meet anytime, by no later than, let's call it September 4th. And then it would have six months to complete. So it definitely goes into the new year. Rule seven, I think it is, says that ad hocks dissolve at the end of a legislative session. You can always reestablish them, but it's very possible you'll have new people or not. It just depends on how that goes. So is that the intent or is the intent December 31st?
The intent of the meeting was December 31st.
So then on the last page, would you just accept changing, instead of no later than six months, just say by December 31st, 2025, the committee shall submit? And, you know...
They could submit it, and then that could be carried to the next session because that could also, you know, be submitted the last meeting.
It really won't be December 31st in real life, right? It'll be whatever the last meeting is in December to be submitted, and then it could be carried to the next session as a, you can do that, as you know. So I think if that's friendly, that I appreciate this effort very much. So...
Friendly?
Yeah. I'd accept it, but I'm not...
You're actually a sponsor.
Sponsor.
December 8th.
Sponsorors. Yeah, I think that makes sense. Yeah, it would be hard to carry over. You can't carry over an ad hoc. It might not all be here. Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I'll just, very briefly, I mean, we had that discussion as we talked about this, as we were, you know, formulating this particular order. It's, you know, the challenge is certainly, you know, the end of the year and the end of the council. But the challenge is also the breadth of the work in a very short timeframe. So we had put it at no later than six months, you know, in hopes of essentially at least having added time into the new year and essentially new council to get the... having added time into the new year and essentially new council, to get the report written and those sorts of things. But, but if the rules are that the ad hoc has to dissolve as of December 31st, then this would have to dissolve as of 31st, December 31st, so.
Yeah, it says, the president may establish, dissolve, or reconfigure ad hoc at discretion, provided that such ad hoc committees shall be reestablished each two-year legislative session. So they basically dissolve, and then you can recreate it. And that has happened, the waterfront ad hoc recreated, so I just wanted to be clear on what the intent was, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion was on the floor to approve.
Now with the December 31st or without?
With the friendly amendment, December 31st.
So you can, you could do that.
Order, do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, thank you.
Motion to receive and file, order.
Second.
So this initial order was coming in as a security camera at Plum Island, the discussion then morphed into a parking discussion, which was not really part of the intent, it was alluded to in the order going forward. It was suggested by Counselor Khan, who had attended our meeting, that we probably should take this to the Parking Advisory Committee going forward. It involves trying to put controls around an open lot right now that we have at Plum Island, and so what I mean by that is, if we go to a parking kiosk-like system, instead of just charging for parking when the attendant's there, they would potentially charge 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, which leads to other issues, like, are we charging people to go vote in the building and things like that, right? And so it cascaded into something that we really didn't want it to get into going forward, when the intent was to put a single security camera out there to potentially go. So the motion, we're receiving and filing it, we want to regroup on this and get it started again, and get what they need, and what they think they need from the Harbor Master out there, so. It was 3 to 0 to receive and file.
Counselor Zede?
Yeah, you know, this is my ward, and I have been talking about this now several months, and I kind of feel bad, it got so ridiculous, you know, honestly, had a long conversation, the primary need right now is safety and security, and the primary way to address that is by cameras, just a couple of them, so they can keep an eye on things. That seemed to be a reasonable request. The parking is a different issue, that's actually much more fraught, and actually much more all over the place as it is. We do charge at the lot, we establish fees, we charge residents one way, we charge residents other, right now we have a basically largely cash-based system, there's ideas, there's even a signed contract with a vendor to, you know, basically have that contractor run the lot. So that whole thing is a mess, and does need to be unclustered and fixed. With that said, I think the camera requests are reasonable, they do conform to our recent camera policy, so I'm asking the motioner if they would be a consideration for not receiving filing this, with the goal of striking all that nonsense at the bottom that says Plum Island parking lot, all the bullets gone. And just to prove the two cameras, that was really what the initial goal was, so they could have some sense of what was happening in the lot. I've been the Ward Counsel for a long time, there are always fires on the beach, and cars, and all kinds of things that happen, especially in a hot summer season, and I think a few cameras is a sensible request for a highly public area, there's no concerns here about being inside a building, or, you know, directly really monitoring employees. So, you know, would there be an indulgence for that? And the parking absolutely can be put off until that can be fixed, and presented in a cleaner way, and be in a state where it's ready to be defensible. It is not today.
Counselor McCauley, and then Counselor Khan.
Oh, do you want to go?
You go ahead.
Okay. So, so to answer your question, no. And the reason, and I'll start with that, because on the meeting on 7/21 that we had, we started to editing that, and the answer wasn't, oh, we just want the cameras, we want them tied to this. And then we asked for, well, how's the data going to be handled? Well, we haven't quite got our policy quite yet. Well, what's the cost of that? Well, we don't have the cost quite of the cameras going forward. And so when we left the meeting on the 21st, I approached the Chief of Staff and asked for all of this data, so that we could possibly do an edit on the floor, and here we sit right now, two weeks later, and there's still no information that's come out. So we don't even know how much the cameras cost, we don't know how they're going to get hooked up, we don't know how the data's going to be managed. We know that maybe the Harbor Master and the police might look at them, but we're not really too sure under what circumstances or whatnot, right? And we certainly don't know the cost of them. Are they $5,000, are they $18,000? We just don't know. And so I would, I tried, I tried to edit it in committee, and the committee will verify on that, and we just didn't get any cooperation on it. So, I'm a no.
Any further discussion, Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President, and thank you, I mean, the Ward 5 Counselors said it kind of like what happened in committee, it was really hard to understand, what's the problem to solve, things that we just ask for anything, when we're going to spend some money to do something and do, implement a change in terms of what we have. So I'm not saying it can't come back, but I think it, when it does, I think we just need to have a lot more information, since we are the authorizing body for surveillance cameras, I think we just need a lot more information related to it, more from also the problem we're trying to solve. I think we're trying to say what kind of incidents, or how could this improve, maybe what is happening there? I mean, we know a lot of people that like to use it, I know a lot of people go out there to the beaches all year round, so I just felt like there wasn't enough vetted here, or even understood by the Harbor Master at the time, and I think that would help us, maybe, if it was to be reintroduced.
Counselor Wright?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just a word of advice to whoever's going to be bringing this forward in the future, it might make sense to separate the two things, separate the cameras, adjudicate that, and then, because parking is very different, and send that through the parking, perhaps to the Parking Commission, and address the parking as two separate issues. So that would be my recommendation, let's address the security and the cameras in one area, and then do the parking separately.
Okay. Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Just want to express my support for my colleague from Ward 1, and his understandable frustration, and say that I would be more than happy to support a reasonable amount of money and a well-thought-through policy around, you know, adding some surveillance in that parking lot. I understand it's an issue, it's a real concern for neighbors, so, and residents who are visitors, you know, so just to say, if this comes back in that shape, definitely be an easy yes for me.
All right, Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Yeah, so this issue does seem like there was a lot of questions unanswered, and I do agree with the Ward 5 Counselor that, you know, this certainly is important, but, you know, we had questions, and there was ample time given, and no answers given. So I think it would behoove administration to come back with a more thorough and thoughtful proposal. I also can appreciate the Ward 1 Counselor's frustration that, you know, historically, Plum Island is known to, you know, attract people that want to party on the beach, et cetera, but I'd like to, you know, be able to understand better from administration what the real safety concerns are beyond the parking cache, because I, you know, that was not quantified at all, that was not really highlighted, what, you know, if any major incidents there have been, it was sort of like, well, we want cameras so that, you know, if there's an incident, we can refer to it, the camera footage, et cetera, but I'm just not sure, like, what the actual problem, it was not explained what the actual problem really is down there, beyond just that there's concern about the attendant, parking attendants having a lot of cash on them throughout the day. So the warranting for the security cameras was a little less clear, is it, are we going after, you know, folks being there in the evening when they shouldn't be, doing things they shouldn't be, teenagers, underage drinking, whatever, you know, I mean, those are typical historical issues of the island, so I'm just trying to kind of get to what exactly the ask is for. So I think it would make a lot of sense for this to come back with a lot more information.
Okay, so motion is to receive and file, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, so that is, that is it for anything else to report out of PWS?
No, we do have a meeting on August 11th.
All right, we are going to lead to executive session, is there anything for good of the order? All right, I'd enter, all right, Counsel Donahue?
Sorry. I was, I have to admit, I was very put off that we allowed ourselves to be interrupted by a member of the public. I know it's hard for folks to understand how things work at councils, they're not used to it, but I don't think that was appropriate, I don't think that should have been allowed. He should have spoke at public comment like anyone else would have as an appointment, and I hope that doesn't happen again, I hope it's not allowed again, because it was really awkward and inappropriate, and it felt a little threatening to have him interrupt us like that, so I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, understood, I wasn't sure who he was, and he may not have understood, he could have spoken at public comment in the beginning, and I did grant him a minute, that did go to a minute and 20 seconds, but point understood. Anything further for good of the order? All right, so I'd entertain a motion from one of my colleagues, essentially for the Newburyport City Council to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and this is in regards to an open meeting law complaint regarding the library investigation report, and we would not be coming back into open session.
So moved, second.
Thank you, for saving me, and second by Counselor Harmon, and we'll do a roll call on that, and generally, the attorney from Eddie, Eddie will be joining us in the Zoom, I did tell her that that would be fine, because I had no way to determine when we were going to be over with. So, roll call on executive session?
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
All right, so we'll be turning off this Zoom, and thank you to the audience.